Okay, well then we'll call this meeting to order for our budget meeting of 2/22/21. With, let's start with a roll call. Adam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Suntall.
Here.
City Manager Krutz.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, um, we have a flag and let's see, who knows the Pledge of Allegiance? Let's make sure first on that. Charlene, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I'd be happy to. Please show me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Dare, I was, had to get a little big in there.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, that was to me, and I practice it every day, so you know.
No, actually, I had it.
I forgot too.
Thanks for doing the digs.
Yeah, well, I guess I get all of you then. All right, Madam Clerk, we have public comment?
Head and read our opening announcement, Mr. Mayor. Good morning and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching or listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and nine. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand function on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the name or telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comments, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And at this time, if you would like to participate in public comment, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. I'm showing Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Looking for motion.
Who do approve?
We got Abbott first and then Dare second.
Revert.
Okay, whoever, however she writes it down. Any further discussion? See none? All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. We have no presentations and we're on to general business. Mr. Krutz, take it away.
Good morning, Mayor Lawson and members of the council. For the record, Neil Krutz, your city manager. We are here today to take our first crack at this coming year's budget. And the, really, the broad purpose of today's discussion is to check in on, on where we are with our, with our financial projections, to check in on where we are with the six financial policies that, that the council has been using for a number of years now to see if they're, if they're, if they're still serving you the way you'd like to have a, hopefully, a robust discussion about their, their use as we're, as we're looking at, you know, revenues and expenses going forward and, and kind of, you know, look, look for that, that broad policy-based, fiscal policy-based direction from you to help us continue to prepare the budget documents heading towards, you know, asking you to adopt the tentative budget, your second meeting in April, and then the final budget, the, the second meeting in, in May. The one twist there is that the legislature is in session. And in years like this, where they're in session, if they do, do take some action that, that impacts our budget, we will get an extra 30 days to, to deal with any, anything that they do to us. So, you know, that happens to us every other budget year and, and here we are in, in an odd year and, and that is happening for us. So before I turn it over to Jeff, you know, I've, I've talked to you previously about, given that, you know, the, the state of our economy, you know, nationally, not, not quite as much locally in recent months, but, but the, you know, it has been, been a soft, a soft economy. And that I was planning to bring you a, a, a set of limited new needs or new proposal, new expenditure proposals for the next fiscal year. Still working on that. I do anticipate that, that, that we're going to be bringing you, you know, a, a new need, so to speak, to, to put some money away for, to buy land and, and to start building a fund towards constructing a future fire station number six that will happen for us out in Spanish Springs, that will, that will want to bring some, some most folks, you know, onto our payroll so that we can expand the, the offerings of the services that they bring into our city. So, you know, a couple of additional dispatchers and a handful of other positions as well. But, you know, setting that stage for, for some limited new needs, I, I do want to tell you that, that we're not going to go through those today. We're still, we're still working on that. I am still, you know, working with, with finance staff and with the department heads on, on, on those, on those proposals and, and I will be bringing them to you here, here very soon. But just kind of wanted to set the stage that we are, we are planning on, on, on a year that, that we don't have great confidence in coming, coming at us. So we are, we are looking to, to manage our expenditures going forward. You're going to see a, a signal or two from, from your chief financial officer, Jeff Cronk, here, starting in a couple of minutes about, you know, some of the things that we are worried about in, in the budget year that are, that, that's headed our way. While certainly the, the CARES Act and the other federal funds that, that flowed to help with the coronavirus have been tremendously helpful. You're, you're going to see, you know, what we're concerned about in terms of our spend in, in the, in the year ahead of us. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff. I believe he's probably going to want to share his screen because we've got 30 or so slides to, to, to go through with you this morning. I anticipate that we'll want to take a break probably in the, you know, hour 15-ish or so. Let everybody stretch their legs, fill up a cup of coffee, whatever the case may be. So we'll, we'll plan on doing that when, when it seems like a, you know, a, a good time has struck us in that, you know, that 9:45-ish timeframe, okay? And with that, we'll go to Jeff.
Everybody, Jeff Cronk, for the record, Jeff Cronk, your financial officer. Pleasure to do this. Let me very quickly share my screen and we'll just walk through a presentation that I've prepared and want to make sure that, first of all, that you can all see that. Is that visible to everybody? You should be seeing a, just a, a, a overall presentation slide saying this is a workshop. Okay, all right. Well, welcome to our workshop. We do this every year. Well, unfortunately, we're not doing this in person. So, you know, as Neil mentioned, I'm going to be mindful of just this format. I don't know about you, but Zoom meetings make me a little extra tired than regular meetings. I don't know why. So that's one of, one of those things. So I know if it affects me, I'm sure it's affecting all of you. So I was thinking, you know, I kind of put together a, a little agenda that we might go through and things that I'd want to share with you and probably, you know, what, what a timely break might be if, you know, maybe we can take the pulse of everybody, you know, at that time. So what I want, what I want to give you today really is just four things or four sections, if I, you know, if I can call it that. The budget calendar, just some key dates, just to remind you of what we need to do this year in order to, to get through, getting to the point where we're going to file our fiscal '22 budget. And then I want to spend some time on our, just reviewing, as Neil had mentioned, just our, our financial expectations and, you know, what we're seeing in the current fiscal year and then as we look into the out year in fiscal '22. And then some of the key budget items in fiscal '22 that, that we feel are driving this year's budget cycle. And then, then I'd like to, hopefully, this will be the conversational part mostly, is on the fiscal policy review. As Neil had mentioned, there's, there's six of them that we've really generated since the recession and they've taken various forms over the years, but they've, they've all had their genesis during, coming out of recessions because we, we learned a lot of lessons, you know, during then and, and we needed some, some guidance and, and from you specifically and, and make this a council-driven budget process. So I want to review all six of those for you and just kind of show you where we're at. And again, take your, take your pulse and, and this is where I'd want some feedback from you and just say if this is still working for you, for us. And, and if this is something either they need to be modified or changed completely. So now's the time, you know, in a budget format or budget workshop format that we want to have that discussion. The final section really isn't an area that I'm going to cover in detail a lot. It's areas that I call it for fiscal items for reference. They're really there for, for, for future reference or, or if there's questions that come up. The first bullet point there you'll see is, I call them causes of change, which basically, from a, from a pure financial perspective, how did we get from one year to the next? You know, what are the main drivers? So that's what that area, or that area of our agenda is designed to do. And again, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on there, but really, we might, we might pop in and out of there if we need to. We need to answer some questions and saying, hey, what, why are we here? You know, because that's essentially what we're trying to answer in a, in a, you know, line item type format. And then, of course, I left the redevelopment agency fiscal summary. Those are just one-page summary, very high level at this point. And, and quite frankly, the, the redevelopment agency areas one and two are primarily composed of two things. They, they serve, have a debt service function and then they're also capital improvements piece. So I know we're going to have a lot more conversations on our capital improvements plan. We have one workshop scheduled in March, so we're going to have a little bit more conversation as it relates to, specifically for the redevelopment agencies as it's woven into our greater conversation on capital projects. So, so with that, let me just, that's our agenda for today. So I thought if we did need a break, maybe a logical time would be asked after the fiscal review, that general fund fiscal review. But again, we can take the pulse and, you know, Mayor Lawson, maybe I'll let you, you know, if you guys need to take a break anytime, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll just, you know, keep on rocking. So, yeah, I kind of hope you're all properly caffeinated, right? Monday morning, 8:30, let's talk budget. I say, bring it on. So, but I understand, not everybody's like me. So. So our key dates, just as a reminder, a lot of this is, this, this is, this is driven by the law and this is just a compliance, just a reminder of what we have to do. Past today, what we're going to end up doing, coming out of today is, is gathering your, your, your feedback and building our tentative budget. Part of that process is the, is the, in the CIP, it's all, you know, the whole budget is, is everything that's entailed, entailed the, the state forms. And we're not going to present that to you until later, but we want to build to that because honestly, the state forms are quite dry. So these first couple items are really just information-driven and, and trying to get your feedback. So the first one, like I mentioned, is going to be the CIP workshop. We're going to do that the last meeting in, in March. The next thing that has to happen after that is we have to file our tentative budget. So what we're working on today is really, again, just getting your feedback and we're going to build that tentative budget based on your direction today. We don't really have to have that approved per se. That's not a requirement of state law. Only the final budget has to be approved by council. So we're going to file that based on, on what we hear today and, and just our current trends of, of our revenue forecast. It's really early in the stage. The tentative budget doesn't mean a whole lot for our city. It, it is quite useful for other organizations in, in Nevada, specifically the rural areas. But for our purposes, it doesn't mean a whole lot. Really comes down to if you can't approve or come to a conclusion or consensus on, on the final budget, the tentative budget by default becomes the final budget. That's never happened. So, you know, for, for our intensive purposes, you know, the tentative budget is really just to kind of a kickstart, you know, to start the process and start the conversation. April 26, Neil mentioned that. That's what we're actually going to bring back what our final budget recommendations are to you. It'll include the tentative budget, everything we talked about today and then everything we're going to talk about between today and then. So that'll be the, the end of April. And then we're going to pull, that's kind of like the, the last bite of the apple, if you will. Then we're going to put all that together in those boring state documents, bring that to you on May 24th for your final approval. And that, that's when we'll actually get your signatures on the state forms. And, and, you know, there's, by state law, we have to do that within the, the last three weeks of, of May, have a public hearing on the tentative budget and we try to do the same, have, present the final budget and have that public hearing on the tentative budget at the same time. So we're going to do that on May 24th. June 1st is just when it has to be filed. So, you know, we, from the time we bring it to you, we have about, about a week before we have to turn those forms around and, and get them to the taxation. As Neil had mentioned though, just as a, as a side note, if we do, if the legislature does do something that affects our final budget, we, we do have 30 days that we can file an amended one. Again, this has never happened for us. It has happened in the state. It's not all that unusual, but it would be unusual for us, but it's there if we need it. So. Okay, with that, let's just kind of dive right in. So I'm, I'm hoping, I tried to, to acknowledge that, you know, this type of a format doesn't, doesn't, you know, play very well to having a conversation on the screen. So I tried to keep most of my slides rather simple. This is probably the busiest one and it's probably best to put it in front of you when everybody's relatively fresh. But this is the most summary, high-level, a, a general fund set of financial statements. It's essentially a profit and loss statement, if you want to call it that. Very, you know, lacking detail, but specifically purpose for that. We're going to get into the detail in the subsequent slides. But I wanted to just kind of give you an, an overall picture of where we're at. So what we're looking at right here is, is really just fiscal '19 actuals, fiscal '20 actuals, and, and then going into our fiscal '21 budget, which we've already filed, and then our estimates as compared to that budget. And then the, the far right column is just our fiscal '22 budget. And again, that's the tentative budget based on just our trends and what our fiscal policies are right now. So, so we built this initial budget, if you will, this first swing, assuming no changes in our policies. That will certainly change, obviously, based on today, depending on your conversation and your direction. What I wanted to share with you is just a couple of highlights on here. And, and actually, let me, let me step back and just finish my, my, get you acclimated to what we're looking at here. That was the cross view. Now we're going to go top, top-down, looking at our total resources. And in government speak, that means your total resources means total revenues and your transfers in. And then followed that, you're going to have your total uses, which, again, in government speak, is our expenditures and transfers out and then our contingency if we've used it and then our net resources. So essentially, you know, if we've, if we've spent more than we've taken in or if we've taken in, you know, more than we've spent. So, and then at the very bottom is just a quick look at our, at our budget, I'm sorry, at our ending fund balance, whether it's actual or budget and as a percentage of our expenditures. And, and that comes into play on our fiscal policy one. We'll get into that here in a little bit. So at the end of the day, I just wanted to kind of, you know, highlight, you know, a couple of things and I circled them. And, and obviously, one of the biggest ones at the top, if you're looking at our fiscal '21, is the CARES Act. So, you know, that's that $16 million roughly number that you see at the very top that we transferred in. I circled it in our fiscal '21 estimates. Clearly, we did not have any, any budget, you know, swearing that right here. We did not budget for that. If you recall, we filed a budget last year, right when, right when the whole pandemic was starting. So we purposely filed a budget with, with no or at least very little COVID impact. And quite frankly, at that time, we didn't even know the CARES Act was going to be allocated to us. If you recall, that was quite a journey where we went basically starting thinking, hey, guys, this reads, we're not going to get a dime of this money, to, you know, getting an allocation through the state and, you know, that, you know, the history. So at the end of the day, we're building that into our fiscal '21 estimates and, and it's, it's not the full $19 million that you might remember is our full allocation. But if you recall, we've had to account for this, some of it in the general fund and some of it are grants and donations fund, depending on the activity. So if it was an activity that was more related to like a sub-grant, like the activity that we did with Reno Housing Authority and we actually sub-granted, there are compliance issues that we have to engage in some audit measures just differently than, and account for it differently than we would a lot of the other expenditures that we can handle through the general fund. So the, by and large, the bulk of it came out of our general fund. So the transfer in came in the general fund. So at the end of the day, I left you a little note at the very bottom, kind of there in blue, talking very briefly how that impacted our general fund. So we, we basically had about $60 million that we transferred in and $8 million of that was, was used to pay for, oh, various expenses that we had of ourselves or our community expenses that I've shared with you in the past. And then the rest of the $8 million was basically against the, the payroll, the public safety payroll costs, if you recall that. So at the end of the day, if you go down to the very bottom, you'll notice that our fund balance jumped and that's not surprising. We just didn't know, you know, during the throes of everything, how far or how high that was going to jump. And it ended up being that our current estimates, about 20% ending fund balance is, is where we're, we're looking to, to land. And again, you know, it's still kind of early in this, in, in the game and, and we'll see where that plays out. But I just kind of wanted to highlight and spend a few minutes on, on just kind of the overview of, of where we're sitting and see how this plays into our fiscal policies as we, as we, you know, continue our conversation. So just remember that the, the ending fund balances, we're approaching, what is it, about $16.5 million, representing a 20% ending fund balance. That's the highest we've ever been. So, but the key takeaway is look in the very next column in our fiscal '22 budget expectations and you'll see that drop pretty significantly. Still pretty healthy. I mean, we're still looking at a, just under a 14% ending fund balance and historically, that's fantastic. But, you know, i- it begs the question, you know, why are we, why are we dropping that much? So we'll, we'll get into that a little bit. And at the end of the day, this number here is kind of what I'm focused on, that $5 million net use. So that's basically what we're expecting our, our budgeted expenditures, expenditures and transfers out to exceed our, our revenue next year. Please, yes, Neil. Oh, and that, that was another thing I wanted to ask. I, I can't see all of you. So I do happen to see Neil, but if there was anybody else, I think the best way to get my attention is to yell at me or have the mayor yell at me, but please, Neil.
I just want to, I want to, I want to make sure that I understand that last column on the right properly, the FY '22 budget numbers. To prepare that column, you assume we were going to meet all six financial policies as drafted. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, yep. And I was going to get into that on the, on the subsequent slide.
Okay.
Yeah, essentially, all six policies, we assume no changes. So this is a policy-built budget. And, and that's going to assume things that you're going to see on the, on the subsequent slides, things like no vacancies, you know, in our, in our, in our personnel costs. So, so there are some natural, as we face this every year, there are some natural bumps up, but it's certainly not to the extent of $5 million. So there are some pressures that we're going to have to, that we're just going to have to acknowledge and address.
Thank you.
Jeff, I have a question.
So I do too. Go ahead, Charlene. I'll be after you.
Okay, um, so Jeff, on our fiscal '21, since we're still watching Congress move slowly, but possibly move with additional CARES Act funding and they are talking about that, some of that coming directly to local governments, that would still, that would be in fiscal '21 if it comes to us before the end of June, correct? And we'd be making further adjustments?
Correct. Well, further adjustments, probably not from a budget perspective. We would certainly make adjustments to our estimates if we, if we happen to know soon enough. But since this is grant-related, it doesn't affect our budget. We can augment our budget from grant revenues. So, so as the case happens, just like it did with CARES Fund, if you, if you go back to our, our, my one-page summary here where we had nothing, you know, transferred in as, from a budget, but we ended up with $16 million. From that $16 million, we can augment our budget and make changes after that. So what I'm anticipating for, for, should that happen for fiscal '21, if we know soon enough, we'll be able to make our estimates. I'm not really optimistic that we'll know in time to make any kind of judgment as to, you know, what that's going to be. So we'll probably end up processing that and if it happens in fiscal '21 in our grant fund. But again, we'll, we'll kind of play that as we go, depending on how the law, you know, plays out. Then as we look into fiscal '22, there's, there's probably going to be some bleed over, you know, as to the expenses that are going to happen. And then we can augment our budget in fiscal '22 based on any new, new funds that come forth. So what I would recommend is, is not, kind of similar to what we did this year in that we file a fiscal '22 budget, assuming no federal funds, and then we'll augment as needed. Does that make sense?
It does. And it makes sense also, those, should we get them, we'd be looking at those as grant funding, like we did with the other funds. It's not more of our everyday expenses for the city, but it is certainly the COVID-related and then how we can help the community through use of those funds, depending on what restrictions they give us if we do get more money coming in. So thank you. That clarifies.
Yeah, and, and just to follow up on that, that, so the House Democrats put forth their plan. If you all read that, I believe it's Friday, they came out with their plan and, and I read it over the weekend and, you know, it's just like anything else. It's quite the read and there's a lot to, to dive in. But when you get to the part that, that details how much money is going to come to the, or could come to the, to the local municipal governments. It's pretty complex. I imagine it's going to be, you know, based on some sort of a CDBG or community development funding model. Honestly, I, I didn't have enough time to, to follow all of it, so I couldn't even estimate right now how much would be allocated to the, you know, to a city our size per se, but it does look like it's going to be, you know, potentially based on, on, on some sort of a population model. But then, like you had said, that there's, there's also, you know, guidance in there. And this is assuming that it passes as it is, right? So it still has yet to go to the Senate and we'll see how that goes. But the, the, the use of it is the expenditures related to the COVID, but there's also stipulations in there that we could offset lost revenue. So, you know, there, and that revenue was based on assumptions made in January of 2020. So, you know, I don't know what all that means. I don't know the time period. And it's one of those things that we're going to have to see what the final, you know, legislation, how it finally reads and what actually ends up getting passed. And then it's going to be different this time in that it's not coming through the state, at least as it reads right now. It's not coming from the state, it's coming directly from the Fed. So we're going to have to rely heavily this time on the Treasury Department and I can only hope that they would come out with guidance a lot quicker and more efficiently than they did last time. If you recall, their, 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 their guidance to us was often and varied, it seems. It just, every, it seemed like every month it came out with a, with a new, you know, frequently asked question update. And then we'll, in fact, we got the last one in December, you know, after we had already spent and allocated the funds, saying that we can, we can, we can spend this even for another year. So it was, it was too late. So anyway, you know, much, much, much more to come on that. But as, as it relates to our budget, you know, I would recommend that we don't include any federal funds in our budget and manage it after the fact, once we, once we know. And, and I suspect that'll take some time. The, 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 what was currently floated, again, by, by House Democrats is very, very vague. So I, I would expect that it would take quite a bit of time before we got any specifics, certainly longer than, than what we need to file our budget.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So real quick question regarding our ending fund balance being higher than we expected. Isn't there a point where we want to be careful we don't get too high and with potential finances coming? And then also just how would that potentially work, knowing that there, there's still some, quite a bit of uncertainty, not even just this next year. Just, we have a new world and a new functioning. And I know where, I think we're going to get to that conversation of how much do we make sure we have a rainy, rainy day fund? But should there be wisdom to think about that? But my real question for this slide is the, is there, it seems, we've not, these are higher than I've seen since I've been in office. And I do know that there's a percentage at some point that we start creating some interesting conversations. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, and, and I would echo that. It's the highest it's been since I've been here. So, you know, I've, I'm not seeing our ending fund balances high. You know, but again, you know, think, depending on how things play out, it looks like it might turn around pretty quick and start going back down. As far as, now, there is, there aren't any regulations to how high our fund balance could be. There, there are regulations that we'll get into here in a second, you know, as to how low we can go, you know, before we start getting, you know, attention from the state. But there, there certainly isn't legally any, any restrictions on our ending fund balance. Please, Neil.
There, there is a, there is a practical consideration in terms of what is protected from collective bargaining impacts, if you want to cover that real quick.
Yep, and that's exactly where I was going. So, yep. So, so, but again, not legally, you know, we're not legally restricted. However, and we'll get into this when we talk about fiscal policy. Number one, there is carved out, if you will, from negotiations, 16.67%, so 16 and 2/3% that, that, that you can remove for negotiating for, for bargaining purposes as it comes to arbitration or fact-finding purposes. So we would be certainly north of that. So all that means is that that ending fund balance or that portion of that ending fund balance, when in this case, if, if this lands, you know, as, as currently projected at almost, you know, 20%, you know, that we would be just over 3% of that portion, you know, would be, would be unprotected, so to speak. So that's the practical consideration that Neil was talking about, but certainly no legal ramifications to go higher. It's just a matter of when, you know, when you're talking about fact-finding and arbitration and negotiations perspective.
Interestingly enough, if I can interject, I was at a, at a, an education seminar a couple of years ago with a city manager in, in one of the Bay Area, East Bay Area municipalities, roughly the same size as we are. They had an ending fund balance of 87% and that was normal, normal operations for them. I was absolutely floored. And that was normal, normal operations for them. I was absolutely floored because here we are typically year to year, you know, rest, you know, wrenching our hands together over. You know, can we afford to budget at eight point three or do we need to go down to six or do we need to go down to five and how do we serve our citizens? So it was a an interesting conversation that I had with the guy on a on a break about, you know, the the things to keep you up at night. And uh, and ending fund balance wasn't a worry for him.
So just to finish that thought then, so one of my concerns is that someone would look at this and determine, hey, look at your ending fund ballots, look what you have. Well, it's obviously inflated because of CARES Act. We know that. But are we gonna find ourselves in an interesting situation because technically your ending fund balance is what it is? It's been inflated. It might get inflated for a second year just as we get through this. But that is not sustainable for years to come because we know we don't get that kind of money extra each year. So just if you play chess and you go a few steps out, we need to be really communicative and wise of how we put this in. Because technicality is is where some of those collective bargaining and all that stuff falls. So uh, so for us, I just think there's a wisdom in us looking at that. Thanks.
Yeah, and and if I can finish that thought, remember when you're going through a collective bargaining process, uh, you know, the fact-finding and arbitration process. Because that's that's actually what the that sixteen point six seven percent is referring to. It's talking about if you're going through fact-finding and arbitration. It's what the what the arbiter can or cannot look at, um, you know, theoretically. And then uh, so when we're going through that process, there's essentially, if I can boil it down, there's essentially two questions to ask. Um, and it becomes a an ability to pay or or not, you know, and one is, do you have the ability to pay? And then second, um, is if the first one is yes, the second part of that question is, is it reasonable? Is the is the ask, you know, reasonable? So, you know, to Neil's point, you know, i- i- if, you know, that agency had a eighty-something percent ending fund balance, that's fine. All that does is that it establishes that you have the ability to pay. So it doesn't say anything about that second piece, though, is that is it uh, is it the proper, you know, whatever's being asked and negotiated is it proper? So that's always the two questions to ask when you go through fact-finding or or arbitration process. Okay. Moving on then, uh, just uh, I'll I'll cover these slides kind of briefly. Um, just uh, kind of giving you a a, oh, I don't know, an overview of of where we're at on some of the some of the uh, detailed parts. So going from, you know, thirty thousand feet, now we're gonna come down a little bit and and get into some of the details. This is still pretty summarized, though. So um, I call these the the big three, if you will, of our revenues and and, you know, it's it's essentially ninety to ninety-five percent every year. Of our general fund revenues come from these areas, the C-tax, the fair share, property taxes and license and permits. So just kind of want to give you a snapshot, if you will, of what we're expect expecting, excuse me, based on just current trends. So um, again, I think I've shared with you in the past that this is a process. And we get data along the way during this process. And uh, just, you know, probably starting now for the next six weeks, we're gonna get a slew of information from uh, the state and the the county assessor and the county treasurer's office. And and we're gonna, you know, tighten these up. But based on just current trends, which a lot of times our data is only through November or or December at this point. Um, so so we just kind of, you know, w- we're just basing this on current trend. So if anything should blow up later, these can always change, but this is what we're looking at. So so C-tax and fair share, uh, you know, we're we're seeing a pretty sizable increase this current year, which I've, you know, talked about in our monthly uh, updates to you. Uh, e- every council meeting, I was updating you on our CARES Act and and just the the state of the economy with during the pandemic. And just seeing our C-tax increase, I think I shared with you every time and how how stunning it has been. You know, how strong and resilient it's been during this whole process. So looking out, uh, you know. Pretty much consensus at this point is that we can expect about a five percent increase on top of what was what we're seeing in fiscal twenty-one. Uh, that's for C-tax and fair share. Property taxes is kind of in that six to six and a half percent range for both years, very consistent. The pandemic didn't affect our our property taxes or receipts at all. Uh, so those are those are tracking just nicely. Um, and then a little bit softer on our license of permits. And those are areas that we've talked about, you know, with our with our own business licenses and then also some of the accounting gaming fees and. And and, you know, some of the the regional activity that we see. So a little bit softer there, but again, that's just based on on current trend. We'll have to see as things open up, you know, um, as we get more data here in the next couple of months, we that that might, um. I would think if anything, that might have a tendency to increase a little bit from where we're at. But again, just based on current trend, that's probably the softest of those those big three. Um, and then and then finally, just I kind of want to spend just a couple of minutes because I was realizing, I don't know if I've ever uh, shared too much with you. If you all know what fair share is. I lump that often with what C-tax. I talk a lot about C-tax and and rightfully so, because it's such a big piece. But fair share is something that actually has its genesis back in the uh, the nineteen eighty-eighty-one tax shift. When when the shift moved from from property tax being the predominant revenue source to to sales taxes. And and there was a, there was quite a bit of um, you know, complaint and and analysis back in the day. And this is way before my time, but you know, uh, back in the day that that basically said that the the formula that was created generated a um. A a unfair situation. That's why they kept calling this fair share. We need a way of of recouping some of the some of the um, revenues that essentially went away from property taxes. And went towards the sales taxes and and essentially the uh, local uh, governments, especially in Washoe County, were saying that we were treated unfairly. And so they generated in nineteen ninety-one, uh, about ten years after all that, um, a a new revenue source. That allowed um, for uh, tax, certain taxes to be generated just within Washoe County and distributed to some of the agencies there. So again, the fair share, that was eighty-one oh four, if anybody is ever interested in the uh, in the history of it, uh, from way back in nineteen ninety-one. And and so it generates about two million dollars for us and and that's unique to Washoe County. So, but anyway, I lumped that with C-tax because it's pretty much the same. Um, uh, revenue sources as that makes up the C-tax. So, okay. That's your history lesson for today. Let's see.
Mr. Kronk, I have a really quick question. Uh, going back to C-tax. Could we be seeing that steady increase of the C-tax because of the influx of people that are moving to the area?
I think that, and also the diversification of our economy that we've seen since the recession. Um, i- if you recall, when 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 the recession happened, that was due to the housing collapse. We were, we were on the tip of the spear of that. You know, uh, we were headlining at us and and of course, Vegas, you know, all of Nevada, but Arizona and Florida and Michigan. There were some states that were just, you know, on the front edge there and we were right there. That's not the case anymore. Um, our our economy since then has changed dramatically. So um, so it's it's partly, yes, what you're talking about, the 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 population, absolutely. Uh, but also, uh, we're we're not so uh, dependent, if you will, on the development like we were um, in the housing boom. Um, so you know, when when uh, you know, like it, like it or not, when when Tesla came in, that really started something. Um, and really since then, our economy diversified in a huge way. Um, you know, so I I think you'll hear Mike Kuzmersky sometimes talk about in those in those days, you know, before or right during when Tesla was making their decision. The the conversation some sometimes changed to, you know, companies would be talking to the to to him and and people in this area and saying. Instead of, hey, how come, you know, why should I come to your area? The question was like, hey, why did Tesla choose you guys, you know? What makes you so exciting? So anyway, w- we've got a lot more diverse businesses that are in this area, and that's what's really been driving our our C-tax. Um, which is primarily taxable sales. Uh, there are areas that, you know, probably the one that's still struggling big time are um, restaurants. You know, eating and drinking places. Um, you know, that 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 uh, that whole industry really took it on the chin. And is is still, you know, still on the ropes, to use the boxing metaphor. So um, you know, once that, once that improves, which is a huge piece of our economy, that should, uh, you know, again, continue to propel our our sales taxes. Does that help? Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Jeff, if if I may, um, just curious, as far as what you just said, um, restaurants and hotels and um, things like that. Uh, that would be under this section here that you would really see the hit or the impact financially to us from from that downturn?
Absolutely. Yeah, when I, their taxable sales within uh, Washoe County are still down about twenty percent year-to-date. And that's folded into this 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 good number that you see in in on the C-tax line. So yeah, so so that just tells you how strong even the rest of the categories, you know, the non um, tourist, you know, and eating out and, you know, those kinds of related uh, you know, um, activities. It just tells you how strong everything else was, building and construction and just retail in general. Um, one thing that really surprised me during this past year was how well the brick and mortars, as well as online shopping, were doing. So it was strong, you know, across and continues to be. It's I say was, but is uh, strong across the board. But yeah, to your point. Uh, the uh, um, the restaurant are is in there as well.
And uh, just one more question. So um, what about for us where we generate revenue from special events and um. Softball tournaments, things like that, where would that category lie?
Yeah, I generally call that a a general fund impact fund. Uh, it's not in the general fund, but it is in our Parks and Rec Fund primarily. Um, and uh, but we subsidize the Parks and Rec Fund. So you'll you'll see on on uh, here in a couple of slides. You'll notice that we had to increase our transfer to the general fund, um, because, you know, they they there's operations, um, you know, had to be suspended a little bit. And so they were struggling a little bit. So so I call that a, even though they have revenues that are generated in that fund and expenses that are that are specific to that fund. The general fund still subsidizes significant amount of their of their operations. Um, but that's that's generally where that goes. So so it is connected to the general fund via the the that the fact that we we subsidize them through the through the general fund.
All right, thank you.
That make sense? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got one. I got one, Jeff, real quick. Um, on the business categories, is restaurants, bars the lowest of, excuse me, of of everything?
I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, our restaurants and bars the lowest on the categories of, I guess, for all the, you know, you're saying how strong construction is and it's on the brick and mortars. Are they the lowest, I guess, category for uh, for self-tax and all?
In that category, yes, they are. Yeah, yeah, they're they're the ones. And if I understand your question right, yeah, they're the ones that have struggled the most out of the ones that have been struggling.
Got it, got it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so that's that's our look at the revenues. Uh, very quickly, if again, if you remember, uh, total resources is is one of the categories in government speak. And resources includes revenues and transfers in. So this slide is just showing what our transfers in, and it's not a lot of activity. Um, that top one, the transfers in from the motor vehicle fund, I'll talk about that here when we talk about our fiscal policies. Um, and then, of course, the the sixteen million dollar transfers in the CARES Act, and then our contingency budget is also part of our fiscal policy. So those are tied in. But just kind of wanted to highlight that we we're just not expecting any other transfers in this year. Um, and it doesn't happen a lot, but just as a reminder, like um, uh, last year, we we decided to transfer money in from the redevelopment area two to repay. The the general fund, uh, from the subsidies that the general fund made back during the recession. So, you know, there are e- every now and again, uh, transfers in that that come in, but uh, we just don't see, uh, you know, expect anything else this year other than what we're seeing right here in front of you. Okay, with that, that's our total resources. Uh, now we'll get into expenditures a little bit. And honestly, this is gonna look a little wonky just because, again, the CARES Act, you know, we're we're accounting for a lot of it into the general fund. So it's gonna skew, you know, what might look, uh, you know, we're usually pretty steady and and some of the, especially in services supplies, is gonna look a little a little weird this year. And and that's just kind of how it is. Um, you know, when we when we had all those expenditures that we, you know, transferred or or accounted for in the general fund. Um, but salaries, uh, as we talked about before, salaries and benefits make up seventy-seven percent of our expenditures. Um, and then services supplies, about twenty-three percent of our expenditures. And we've got a fiscal policy about that, too. We'll talk about that here in a in a few minutes. But uh, essentially, uh, you know, we're looking at a modest increase in fiscal twenty-one as we're compared to fiscal twenty. Um, and then a little bit larger increase in salaries and benefits of eight point four percent. But again, uh, the bulk of that is is due to the fact that we're we budget full complement. Um, so you know, w- we're expecting or I'm expecting, we budget all the all the positions to be funded as of July first. So we know that's not gonna be the case, but from a from a budget authorization perspective, that's what's driving up primarily. There's other things in there like workers' comp and PERS rates that we'll talk about, but primarily the bulk of that is going to be, um, you know, just increased complement budgeted, you know, budgeted to the complement. Services and supplies, again, that's the part that's kind of kind of funky. So, you know, uh, at the end of the day, that's why I I brought down, you know, a kind of a note. Highlighted in green there, if you will, that, uh, you know, what does it look like if we didn't have CARES? And honestly, you know, fiscal twenty-one, you know, we're tracking that we're gonna be significantly under budget, but that's not surprising, uh, considering what we're going through, you know? Um, a lot of our expenses has been covered and a lot of our activity is related to the pandemic and a lot of our expenses related to the pandemic is covered with the CARES Act. So, you know, that has allowed us to uh, to underspend a lot of our um, both services, supplies and salaries. Uh, you know, when when we went into this, and I think Neil had mentioned this before, we, you know, took a cautious approach. So a lot of our vacancies, we left vacant. Um, a lot of the new needs that we that we highlighted for fiscal twenty-one, we put it into the budget. And didn't fill them, um, you know, because the pandemic was was, you know, just happening all at the same time. So that that partly is what's driving our ending fund balance to to be high in addition to the CARES Fund, but that's also, this is a big piece of it. Um, but that also is not sustainable. We're we're not always gonna have a pandemic and we all, you know, we don't always want to have so many vacancies. So as we look forward into our fiscal twenty-one, uh, or I'm sorry, fiscal twenty-two budget. Um, part of that reason that our that our um, ending fund balance is gonna drop a little bit is because we expect to kind of get back to normal operations. Um, you know, we'll see. It's one of those things, uh, you know, this this pandemic will play out as it plays out. And we're gonna react to it in 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 a lot of ways, but we do, we do anticipate that at some point, we want to get back to normal operation. So um, kind of hope that, uh, you know, clarifies things a little bit, but you know, when you look at services and supplies especially, that that's completely skewed by by the CARES Act. And all the activity that that was going on. And that's not only just our expenditures, but all the expenditures that we did for, um, you know, our citizens and and community assistance. Okay. Uh, the other piece of uh, our our uses, i- if you will, so we our uses are are, you know, expenditures, and now we have transfers out. We always have a lot more activity in our transfers out than we do our transfers in. So uh, and a lot of these are these are policy-driven. So, you know, we'll have a greater conversation on these, but I wanted to just highlight to you what what's in there. Um, and and we'll have more, you know, deeper dive into it, if you will, uh, as we go go into the policies. But uh, yeah, at the end of the day, our fiscal twenty-one estimates are kind of in that middle column and and our capital projects. If you remember, uh, we 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 filed a budget, um, uh, shortchanging, if you will, our fiscal policy. Our policy is to to transfer two and a half percent of our total revenues. And we filed a budget in fiscal twenty-one that uh, shortchanged that by about a million, million point one, uh, one point one million dollars. Uh, just again, because that was one of the areas that uh, we we wanted to use to fund the new needs. Um, and again, this was all before the pandemic. So, you know, anytime we look at uh, fiscal twenty-one budget, we kind of have to take it with a with a re- remember that, uh, you know, we we filed it. Not thinking, uh, or not wanting to to build into the uh, the actual budget, any impact from the um, from the pandemic. So, um, and that follows through for the rest of them. Same thing with IT hardware and software. Uh, the the GURB turf replacement that we're designating for marijuana fees. Again, these are all policies. We'll talk about it more in depth here in a second. Um, and then and then, uh, Councilman Anderson, this is where our our transfer in from the um, or transfer out, excuse me, our subsidy to the Parks and Rec Fund. Um, uh, I'm I'm kind of down here on our on our fourth bullet point. Uh, should do a better job walking you through where I am and my talking points. But uh, uh, our 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 transfer, our subsidy, if you will, uh, to the Parks and Rec Fund is about two point one million dollars. Uh, this current year and then next year, we we hope that'll go down. Um, again, we'll kind of have to see how the uh, how the pandemic plays out. But we do expect that to get a little bit better operating, uh, you know, going forward. And, you know, we adjust as we go. Uh, debt service uh, remains pretty static at seven, uh, about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then our self-insurance fund, we're gonna talk about that a little bit. We we've uh, kind of uh, oh, I don't know, whittled that down almost to the bare bones when it comes to cash. We've had a lot of activity in our general insurance fund, and this could come from anything from from liabilities to, or excuse me, from lawsuits. To uh, um, equipment accidents. It could be just a host of things where we have to be self-insured. And over the course of the last couple of years, we've really taken some hits in that fund and and have kind of whittled it down to to very little. So um, we're not expecting, uh, you know, any kind of extra transfer in fiscal twenty-one, but it is an issue that we're gonna have to address in fiscal twenty-two. So so in addition to, uh, we increased our general um, contributions, if you will, that are that are that are coming from the various departments. Uh, we're also budgeting uh, an additional contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to try to stabilize our cash, you know, our cash flow in that fund. So again, we'll we'll talk a little bit more about that, but um, but just kind of a heads up as to, that's one of the areas that that we're gonna need to address a little bit. Okay, after that, we just I just want to go through some, uh, what I call key budget items, really just sort of a, hey, heads up. Yeah, you know, the this is, these are the things that are on my radar or Neil's radar and and, you know, if there's anything, uh, Neil, if you want to, you know, jump in at any time, and that's always the case. If I'm missing something or you don't want to, you want to elaborate, please. Um, but these are, these are not all encompassing, but just wanted to to give you a few highlights as to, these are some of the areas that uh, maybe present some risk, you know? Uh, and maybe some the areas that are just um, um, driving some of our budget expectations. Uh, the first one being our employee contracts, just, uh, you know, as a heads up, I think Neil has told you that, you know, we we have, we've just started our 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 conversations. Conversations. Nothing has been settled when we're talking about fiscal twenty two. And even fiscal twenty one, everything has been settled with the exceptions of the exception of the non supervisory police officer. So that still remains outstanding. But as we look forward into fiscal twenty two, we're not assuming anything as it relates to negotiations. Including a cost of living. So it's not appropriate to, at least we feel it's not appropriate to include anything in the budget. And and let those negotiations play out, you know, according to their natural course. So. Okay. PERS rates. So just as a reminder, the the legislature sets these rates, and they set them every bi-year, bi-annual. Season, budget season, it matches the the state's budget year. So the legislature gets recommendations from the PERS board. And the PERS board meets, I believe it's in November is when they make these recommendations. So they're recommending increases. For the regular members of point two five percentage points. And then one point five percentage points for public safety members, and then rates for our judicial members remain unchanged. So at the end of the day, that's gonna impact the general fund by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred and forty five thousand dollars. We have listed here, public safety obviously being the lion's share of that, just because it's, you know, the largest increase. But where we stand after these increases take place, and and honestly, the the legislature pretty much generally rubber stamps. What the PERS board recommends. I've never seen them do otherwise. So I fully expect that these would be implemented starting July first. Two thousand twenty one, and they'll rest at twenty nine point seven five percent for non-public safety or, you know, what PERS calls regular members. And then forty four percent for public safety employees, and then twenty two and a half percent for judicial. So and again, just as a reminder, what that means is that essentially for every dollar of salary that you make. Not including overtime or some other, you know, some other activity, but just basically the one dollar of every or of every dollar that I that I that we spend in. Salary, twenty nine point seven five, you know, cents, if you will, has to be paid for regular members. Forty four cents for public safety members for their for the PERS contribution rates. So. Okay. Health insurance, another annually big area. And you'll notice a lot of our conversation here going forward is gonna be on on employee benefits. It's just a big piece of what we do. Right now, at least in the tentative budget, we're not including a rate increase. Part partly because we have yet to have met with our with our our brokers. And get some of the planned spend and the regional spend. They've got a lot more visibility to to regional costs than than we do. So we need to have a conversation with them and then just see how our particular plan is is, you know, projecting and and looking in comparison to the regional. But that being said, this is the highest we've ever seen it as far as our ending fund balance and our cash balance in this plan. So as it stands right now, we're looking at fiscal twenty two, if all things, you know, projects out, that we're gonna be in that nine to ten million dollars range. Or an ending fund balance. And again, that's one of those areas that, at least in my lifetime here, lifetime here, we've never been that high. So so this is, this is a new, you know, territory for us a little bit, and and so we wanted to at least start the tentative budget saying, okay, well, let's build in a zero increase. And just kind of see where it goes from here. The the tricky part with this is that, yes, again, it's one of those things we were talking about. A lot of these are skewed because of the pandemic. From a cost or, excuse me, from an expense perspective. We had an amazing year, both in fiscal in fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty one. Our costs are way down and, you know, again, without talking to the industry experts, I've got my opinions. And I've got a, I've got a feeling that a lot of people just aren't going to the doctor and are, you know, maybe delaying some of the 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 normal routine health. Activities that they did just because of the shutdown. So, you know, the question is, if that's true, if that assumption is true, what what does that mean? Does that mean that we're gonna get hit with extreme high expenses here in the coming years? People doing some catch up, you know, maybe they put off some surgeries, you know, maybe they put off just, you know, going to the doctor and. You know, doing their doing their normal pre- preventative activities. And is that gonna catch up to us? So I don't know. The question on this is, is it's one of those things, the pandemic is having an effect, yes. What does it mean going forward? Not sure yet, you know, so so this one remains a little bit tricky to pin down. But at the end of the day, you you have to say, you know, we certainly have the highest ending fund balance that that we've had, at least in my time here. So so that's a good thing. So if it does, if things do get a little squirrely on us in in costs going forward, at least we're gonna, we're in a strong position. So what that means for rates, again, we'll talk to our brokers and have that meaningful conversation and and kind of see what they think, you know, as to. If there's any delay in a lot of those expenditures and 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 maybe that's just something that's being forwarded in time. So again, more more conversation to come, but right now, as it stands, we thought it best just to include a zero percent increase for now. And let's really, you know, identify, and then we'll bring it back to you when when we bring our city managers' recommendations in in April. And and give you, we'll have a better idea at that point. Okay. Workers' compensation. We've been talking about this for many years now. So if you recall, going back several years, we we were one of the few organizations that had cash in our fund. We at one point had five or six million dollars in our fund when 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 all the heart and lung cancer claim. Or I'm sorry, benefits really started coming to fruition. So we were in a fortunate position of that we that we were able to to whittle that down. And buy us some time. But here we are, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we we've pretty much burned through that cash. And and what we're trying to do now is just maintain solvency in this in this fund and maintaining a minimum one million dollars cash reserve. And and it's it's funny to even hear those words come out of my mouth, of one million dollar cash reserve and solvency. So but these these benefits have the potentiality of of being that impactful. So. From a financial services department perspective, we're actually recommending building up our reserve, building back our reserve up to at least that three million dollar mark. Because that's where our stop limits are. And what that means is that that's when the, you know, our insurance will pay for, you know, the first. Or I'm sorry, we we pay for the first, you know, cuts of the expenses up to three million dollars, and then the insurance kicks in and stops our loss on those claims. The tricky part is that that's three million dollars per claim. So it's like, wow, I mean, you can have two two claims and that that could just, you know, totally, you know. Financially trash your 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 fund. So, you know, we see the need to build this back up. Right now, we're just, again, until we get a better picture of how this pandemic's going out and approach things cautiously. We're saying, let's keep a minimum a minimum balance in there of of a million dollars to cover our ongoing costs. And and see how those, you know, those claims go. Right now, you know, it's one of those things, we can see these claims coming. They they don't happen overnight. And a lot of times, you know, you'll get the claims and it takes, it could take many months or even a couple of years before you get into a total loss, you know, total disabled loss situation. So so anyway, it's one of those things. It's also a tricky part that the benefits are completely driven by the legislature. So, you know, we have really zero ability to manage this other than how we're gonna fund this. So and they 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 can change dramatically. The we've seen them go up mostly. But we've also seen them go down. It really kind of depends on who's in charge and what their focus is at the at the legislature. So. As far as fiscal twenty, we, that's the most recent actuarial study that we that we have. You know, the most recent ending fiscal year that we that we have completed, and we had an eight and a half million dollar long term liability in that fund. So that's just a, you know, kind of a gives you an idea of over time, over the course of many years, based on the the lost claims that our actuaries know at the time. We can expect to pay out eight and a half million dollars over the course of twenty years or thirty years, you know, some long term basis. We just don't know when those will hit, you know, and and we don't know what else is out there, and that's the problem. We also don't know when or what the benefits might change. So this is one of those funds that's very, very difficult to make. Long term funding solutions for. And quite frankly, you know, I'm not really sure how to do that unless you just plan on socking away a lot of money into that fund. So. Oh, please, yes.
A question on this. So obviously, it seems wise to put money in there, because, you know, we don't want to be caught on. Being surprised by something, but it seems like you couldn't put enough money in there almost. But then the other question I have is by having money in there, does that somehow make us a target as well? You disappeared in your voice.
Oh, I was just gonna say, could you elaborate on that question? What do you mean by?
You know, when when, you know, if you come and tried to sue me for something and I have no money, you know, you're wasting your time. You know, you might be able to get my dog, but you're not gonna be able to own me. I don't I don't have much to to offer, but if we we put too much in here, are we putting ourselves, setting us up for? For some kind of, hey, look, we can really go after that as well, when we have other city needs we need. I mean, there's a. Is there a balance in that, or is that not how that works?
No, it really isn't. I mean, you know, certainly you can be, you can be sued for all kinds of reasons, right? And and even just the appearance of having money in a fund or not, but this isn't one of those funds that. If if it doesn't have any money in it, they can, they can still sue you because at the end of the day, we have to, we have to pay this. You know, the workers' compensation is is required by law. So whether we have money in this fund or not. And that means it could either be high or 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 very little or nothing in there. It doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, we would have to pay this. So the way we would end up funding it is if, for example, if this was at zero, we would have to fund it by, we have to find a way to transfer money from the general fund. At the end of the day, even if there is money in here, excuse me, we can't can't transfer it back to the general fund. But it also doesn't open us up to to greater liability, because at the end of the day, we still have to pay it. So I guess I'm saying is whether there's money in that fund or not, it really doesn't matter. We we have to pay these benefits.
I understand the benefits. I'm just thinking about being sued, you know, as as things happen. But but I get I get what you're saying. If you think it doesn't matter, I just, I think if this gets too high, part of me wonders if we'd be a target a little bit for. A lawyer to look and say, hey, look what they got. We can get this amount compared, but maybe it doesn't matter when it comes to city. I don't know.
Yeah, my my understanding is that, no, it wouldn't matter, because even if we had nothing in there and a lawyer wants to sue us. It wouldn't matter if we had a whole bunch of money in here or zero, they would still, you know, they could they could still sue us for whatever's in our general fund. You know, from that perspective. So. Yeah, it's really, it's really benefit driven, and and if there's a case to be made that, you know, we need to pay pay it related to a benefit. How much money is in here is is kind of irrelevant from from that perspective. Now, from a financial perspective and just managing, it's very relevant, you know. So, you know, it's one of those things, you're your first statement, yes, the, you know, to have money in there, and I think you're absolutely right. I think it'd be, I'd be very hard pressed to say we have too much in here because our liability is so strong or so high. Unless the benefits changed. So, you know, we could take, okay, take a very radical extreme. Let's say the legislature, you know, wants to take this pendulum way, you know, much the other way and say, ah, we're kind of done with heart and lung cancer claims. We're gonna take that out of the law. And and all of a sudden, that liability goes away completely. You know, that's not gonna happen. But just, you know, just to be facetious, the, you know, the idea is that it's there from the standpoint of. The legislature really drives this and and we have to kind of react to it. So again, it's very, it's very difficult to. To your point, I mean, you could put, you could put a whole bunch of money money in there and and probably, you know, still be short. So as as it is, because that cash has been whittling down and we're trying to keep a minimum ending fund balance, you know, at least a. At a minimal level, you know, to manage our our cash and 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 manage those claims as they come in. You know, we're increasing our contributions over the course of time. So, you know, just as from from fiscal twenty one to fiscal twenty three. We've had to increase our our general fund contribution, just that portion, about six hundred thousand dollars. Just to continue to meet that, you know, that minimum one million dollars of cash. So. When you, when we, going back to that that previous, you know, slide when we first started and looking at our general fund. And how we have this really high fund balance now, this is one of those areas that we're increasing our contributions every year, and it keeps increasing. And even though we have a nice, healthy ending fund balance in fiscal twenty one. You know, at least five, six hundred thousand dollars of that's gonna go away in fiscal twenty two just for this, at least, you know. And then that's assuming that we don't need another transfer that of what we just don't know about, you know, meaning like, is there a case out there? That that's maybe, you know, warming up in the bullpen that we don't know about yet. So. Again, that's just, it it's kind of one of those that, you know, we've been talking about it for for several years, and and now we're, we've kind of come to the point where where we now have to manage it. And it's and it's gonna start taking significant chunks of our resources.
Jeff, I have a quick question on that. So you're saying you recommend increasing the reserve in subsequent years to three million dollars. You're also saying for this budget, it's a twenty one percent increase just to maintain our one million dollar. Are we going to do more than the one million dollar this year? Or you're asking us to look in subsequent years gradually add to that so we can reach the three million? How how long do you forecast that to happen? Not this budget, but looking forward? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes, thanks. That's a great question. Thanks for the clarifying question. Yes, that's exactly how how I'm recommending to approach that. You know, certainly don't, you know, we certainly can have a conversation about that, but just from my recommendation. Knowing that the the pandemic is still going on and the economy has still got a lot of questions involved. My recommendation is to soft pedal this somewhat, you know, to a degree in that, you know, keep that that minimum one million dollar cash reserve for fiscal twenty two. And then as we look into the out years in fiscal twenty three and twenty four, try to slowly build that up. Or quickly build that up depending on, you know, what happens, you know, as those claims come in, back up to that three million dollar cash reserve. So so my goal is to do that, my recommendation, if I you can put it that way, would be to to build that three million dollar cushion. Over the next year to three, the next one to three years, when we're talking about fiscal twenty three. So so say fiscal twenty three through fiscal twenty five, if, you know, unless something, you know, crazy happens and our claims really get out of control. Really trying to build that up over the course of time. So so perhaps maybe adding a million dollars a year or half a million dollars a year or something to that effect. You know, we have to look at the overall picture, but but yeah, generally, starting in fiscal twenty two. Keeping that minimum million dollars, and then as we look into those out years, fiscal twenty three, twenty four, that's when we need to start building that back up. But yeah, and that's and that three million dollars is really just a a a level of saying, hey, that that's that's where our single claim loss. Stop loss limit is, and that's just seems to be a prudent place to be. And but we're not ready to do that yet, again, because of the pandemic and and all those things. That would be just my recommendation, but yeah, to your point.
Okay, thank you. That that makes sense.
Yeah, great question. Okay, are we done with workers' compensation? General liability fund, I talked about this a little bit, but it's kind of the same concept as we're talking about with the workers' compensation fund. This is just one of those areas that frankly, we've just been hit in the last few years, you know, a lot of claims, a lot of legal costs. Excuse me. And that's just whittled our cash reserves down to, you know, critically low levels. And so now where we kind of find ourselves very similar situation where we're finding with the workers' compensation fund. In that we have to increase our total contributions just to kind of maintain, you know, cash level funds. So the way this works is that we we generally charge the different departments throughout the general fund. And we make contributions from those, it's an expense to the general fund and a contribution into the general liability fund. And we do that via, you know, charging, charging the different departments. We're we're also recommending an additional transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in in next fiscal year. Again, just to kind of boost it back up, if you will, and 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 maintain and help out our cash levels just a scosh. And and not do a direct charge, because, you know, what we try to do is is maintain our cash levels through those direct charges that we have through the departments. But really, just to kind of give ourselves a better footing, if you will, we're 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 also recommending a small, relatively. Small transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund into the, you know, for for the fiscal twenty two. So we just think that's necessary this year in order to 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 kind of get off the mat a little bit. And again, it's one of those things, we're gonna have to see how it plays out. This is one of those funds that you kind of have to react to. Again, it's, you know, it's always, how much money do we want to put in there? And and we had some reserves in there, you know, a couple of years ago, and then we just got, you know, hit with a lot of claims. So that happens, you know, so we've had a kind of a rough stretch, and so now we're needing to kind of build that back up. So again, same conversation, you know, we're looking to to maintain our minimum levels in fiscal twenty two. And then as we look into the fiscal twenty three, twenty four timeframe, build that back up slowly.
Is that reflected in the current budget you showed us?
It is. It is indeed.
Thank you.
Okay. Last one, before we we kind of moved on to the fiscal policies, is just our capital improvement plan. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. Because we're gonna have a workshop that's scheduled on March twenty second. But again, this tentative budget assumes full funding of our fiscal policy. So what that means is that we're we're planning to transfer two and a half percent of our general fund revenues, you know, which is a little more than two million dollars. more than $2 million, plus the IT needs for, for refresh, um, and then also, uh, turf replacement at GURP at $800,000. So again, I'll, I'll, I'll show you how that, how that plays out. And, and I didn't want to spend a lot of time on, on capital improvements, uh, today, just because we're going to have a, a deep dive, if you will, into our, um, our, our rolling five-year CIP plan on March 22nd. So, um, you know, unless you have, um, you know, maybe specific questions as it relates to this, this, uh, uh, specific tentative budget, probably your, your questions will be answered more in depth a- at that meeting, at the next workshop.
Hey Jeff, uh, Ed here.
Yeah.
I didn't see, uh, OPEB on there.
You will here in a second. Yeah, yeah, we're good. We're going to get into more of the, uh, employee benefits, uh, when, when we talk about policy number six.
Okay, so can, uh, you wrap up, you have a stopping place here, close?
Yep, right now. This, this is kind of a natural stopping spot if, if this is, uh, what you'd like to do, Mayor.
Yeah, you, you are just right on top of it. Thank you. Why don't we take 10 minutes, be back here at, uh, five minutes of 10 or 9:55? Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Um, I want to spend a little time on this just because, you know, it is probably our most important fiscal policy. Um, and so we need to, we need to spend a little time on this and, and Council and Dare, this is, uh, what you were referring to, um, earlier and, and, you know, when I talked about, there's a lot of different targets, um, both in, in, uh, in the, what's allowed in the law or the administrative code and the NRS, as well as our own internal, um, targets that we've used for this. So, so to start off, um, the, the council's official policy, uh, that was adopted in fiscal 11, and we haven't, we haven't changed it since then. Um, and certainly we, we can, we, we talk about this every year, is that we want to maintain a balance, an ending fund balance of at least eight, 8.3% of expenditures. And, you know, again, nothing magical, about 8.3%. That's just one month, so one twelfth, um, of expenditures. That's certainly not a lot. Um, and it's, it's actually less than what's, uh, recommended by, uh, the GFOA and, you know, other, other standards boards. Uh, they usually recommend two months, so somewhere around that 16, 17%. Um, but now what, so that's our official policy, but we, we certainly deviated that and, and, and that's fine, you know, because the policy is really designed just to, uh, not paint yourself in a, in a corner, so to speak. Um, you know, put limitations around you from the, from an operating perspective, but just to kind of give you guidance and, you know, expectations. And so what we've done from a budget perspective is ask council every year, what are you comfortable in allowing that, uh, fund balance to go down in any particular year? How, how far down would you like that to go in order to give us, uh, you know, maximize our, our spending flexibility? Um, or, you know, the needs of the year. And so in prior years, you, you, you've been willing, uh, as a, as a council to go as low as five or six percent from a budget as long a- a- and, and keeping our policy at 8.3%. So, and, and again, that's fine. Um, our, our goal always from a management team is to be north of that 8.3%. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we try to, we try to, at the end of the year, when we, when everything's all settled, um, our budget is one thing and then our actuals, you know, we try to push for that 8.3%, but allowing what's in the budget gives us that flexibility on a given, on any given year, depending on, you know, what's happening with that year. Uh, just from a internal perspective, um, optimally is, uh, our, our cash flow, our, to manage our cash flow needs throughout the year, uh, we found that a, an ending fund balance of about 12 and a half percent is kind of that sweet spot, you know? So kind of right in between that one and two month levels, if you will. So, um, that's been our internal policy targets. Um, there's also the statutory targets and, and there's two of them that we have to keep in mind. So administrative code, uh, you know, basically says if we budget anything that's lower than 4%, uh, essentially the state comes knocking at our door, you know? Yeah, we'll, we'll probably get a call from the, the CLGF, uh, which is the Committee of Local Government Finance, of which I'm a member, which, uh, is going to be kind of weird to have to come before myself, uh, if we ever went below 4%. But essentially what that means is that the state, you know, i- is required to just start inquiring, saying, hey, you know, what's going on, guys? Why are you so low? Um, and if they, you know, once they start digging, if they find things are, are, are out of whack and are dangerous, um, ultimately, if it gets too bad, they could, uh, take over, you know, fiscally a- and, and start making decisions. Um, but that's in pretty extreme cases. Um, it's not unprecedented. It has happened. Um, but that, that's kind of the, the threshold that, that starts that process, so to speak. And then, of course, we talked about the, the, uh, ability to remove, um, six, 16.67% um, of our ending fund balance from negotiations. So we talked about that before. So a lot of different targets with this policy and, and it, it always just bears some conversation. And I think every year, we've always had a good conversation. Uh, this year being quite different in that we have, um, you know, uh, uh, at least we're targeting, uh, ending fund balance pretty far north of all this. So, so this will be a little bit different conversation than what we've had in the past. So this is just a summary and, and, and the rest of our slides, I've, I kind of generated it to look like this, try to give us a very, you know, high level view of what our, what, what it looks like, um, if we were to implement our policy. So again, um, we built our budget, assuming that we wanted to, to keep at least 8.3%, which is our policy. So as a result, if you're looking at our fiscal 22 tentative budget, we would be looking at a 13.8% ending fund balance or a little bit more than $4 million over that policy. So again, the purpose of this policy is just to maintain fiscal stability throughout the year. So the, the tricky part with this year, um, in that, uh, you know, we don't, we don't expect to, to have a ending fund balance problem, so to speak. Um, but as you look out, unless we, you know, unless our revenues significantly come up and, or if our, or if our expenses don't, uh, get managed a little bit more, in coming years out, when we look at, uh, fiscal 23, 24, you know, we would expect to have, um, problems, you know, because the, because, um, the expenses because the, because the expenses are certainly, you know, spiking a little bit. And we can get into that, you know, why, but from a policy perspective, and, and this is probably part of the conversation where it gets more, or part of the budget meeting that gets a little more conversational. So this is where, you know, we're looking for your direction and, and this isn't something that we're looking to vote on per se, but we're seeking direction to see if this policy still works for you or if it's, you know, needing adjustment or, you know, radical change or, or nothing. So this is the part where, you know, I turn to you and, and see how you want to go forward.
All right. Questions from the council then?
I think the, I think one of the questions we always come back to, and we, we do know that we can end at a good place and we've proven that over your, you know, we, we do, we're very fiscally responsible. We're, we're not, if anything, we fall in the better direction than the, than the bad direction of budgeting. But I've always questioned if we should consider just taking a step where we can bring it up one percent. And I say that because it just gives us the room to really just set us up for whatever is happening, that we have some, some room to be wise, some room in case something fell out of the bottom. But that's, we can fault, we can do that this way or even having contingency finances. Both of them create that same thing. So if we don't change this, then I would suggest we really look at the other. And both have different principles. So, but I, I do think if there's some finances to do so, I'd, I'd like to see us kind of create some, some ground to stand on a little bit in case we don't know what the next couple of years look like.
Actually, can I follow up on that real quick? Because that actually brings up a, an interesting point of a direction that we might want to go. You raise a good point to Council and Dare that a lot of these fiscal policies are woven together and they do, you know, taken together do form a, a story and a, and a, and a purpose, if you will. We could cover all of them if you would like and get the overall, you know, the overview of what all these six are, instead of treating these one at a time and then, and then going back and addressing the, the individual ones that you would like. Or we can do this one at a time. So I guess, I guess what I'm saying, we, you know, we have an option of how we want to guide our conversation today. We could either, I can, I can just go through and, and give you the overview of what all these are and then we can kind of take a more of a holistic approach to it, or we could just do these one at a time. Your, your, your choice as a, as a group. It's just a thought.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I think moving through one at a time and Jeff, I would like to comment on thirteen point eight. That's one of the largest ending fund balances since I've been in office. I mean, I've been here when we've been down and it has too, that five percent, six percent. And considering we're just coming out, not even out of this pandemic, a pretty amazing that we, you said twelve point five is optimum and we're looking at thirteen point eight, which I think puts us in a real strong, strong position from a budget perspective. So I'm happy with what we're looking at right here. And if everyone else wants to, you know, not take these one by one, I'm, I'm open. But just my comments on the ending fund balance and what you've got presented, I think, looks really strong.
Mr. Mayor, if, I, I think it might be helpful if we put them all together and then kind of go back and take them apart. That way we make sure that we're not overlapping anything and missing out anything.
And I would share your thoughts there too, Mr. Anderson. I think the overall view, because changing one does affect others. And if, you know, even at a twelve and a half percent, any fun balance that we still have to come up with that money in future years to budget for that. So it's the holistic approach, I think is the right one, Jeff.
Okay. Let me proceed then.
Mayor Lawson, if I can, if I can jump in. One, one thing I want to point out is that the numbers you have in front of you right now do not include any new needs at all. They, you know, and I, and I spoke at the, the beginning of my remarks about, you know, wanting to bring forward a, a limited amount of new needs and wanting to find a way in our budget to stash some money away for, for future Fire Station Six. So please, I, I would ask you to kind of keep those things in mind as we go through these numbers. They're not included in what you're seeing right now. Okay? Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, so that'll be the, the cap of the fiscal policy one. Going on to fiscal policy two, and I'll buzz through these with the idea of, you know, we'll, we'll approach this holistically and, and then we can bounce back and forth, you know, depending on how we want to address the individual ones. Fiscal policy two. Excuse me, the purpose of this one is, is really to give us some flexibility to handle the unknown. Nevada law allows us to establish a contingency, contingency budget up to three percent of our expenses. And we've, we've not established one that's, that's that high. So we've always been in that one to one point two, one point three range, percent range, because we've actually tied it to an actual dollar amount. And that really works for us. It has worked for us in the past. But just know that, that we do have room that we can include, that we can increase this contingency budget if we, if we want. What this does is that this is not funded. This is not a, this is not a set of, of amount of dollars that we have set aside. That's the stabilization fund. This is the contingency budget where, which is really just a budget authorization. So it allows us to, to spend money when we don't have an authorized budget to do so. So the best example that I can, that I can, you know, give you is really, you know, several years ago now, when we had a large need to, to buy public safety radios and they, they were about just under four, five hundred thousand dollars using round numbers. And, you know, we didn't, we didn't include that in the budget. That wasn't, that was an expense that, that didn't hit our radar by the time we were filing the budget. So that was an unknown. That was the, you know, contingency that happened. So what we were able to do is tap into this budget and move the budget authority based on your approval, of course. This, this has to be approved by council in order to buy those, those, those radios. So it's really a two-part decision process. One, if we have a large budget or a large expenditure that's not included in our budget, the, the first question we have to ask is, is there budget room? You know, somewhere else in the budget, do we have savings and, you know, so on and so forth? The case of those radios, we did not. So we had to tap into this budget. The second question is, do we have the resources in the general fund? Like I said, this is an unfunded ability to, 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 you know, fund some sort of expenditure with just budget authorization. But you have to find out, you know, do we have enough resources to actually do it? So, so the second part of that is an analysis of the general fund saying, hey, do we have resources in our general fund to handle this expenditure? Yes, and, yes, and or no. If the resources are there, then we don't have to, you know, fund it from another source. If the resources aren't there in the general fund, we've, we've historically tied this budget, contingency budget to a transfer in, if you remember, for a million dollars from our, from our vehicle fund. And it's, it's an identical amount. So at the end of the day, when we have an incoming source, all right? An incoming transfer in from the general fund and then a potential use of that money, it, it washes out to, to net zero from a financial perspective. If we, if we so desire to use it that way and looking at the budget document, that's how it looks. It has a net impact of zero. We don't have to transfer it in. Like I said, if the general fund has money and has the resources in order to, to fund whatever expense it is, we won't transfer that money in. But if, if, if it gets pretty difficult and, and it's a large expenditure and we don't have the resources in the general fund, we would transfer that money in. Now, that's normally how we, how we've done it. This year is, is different and we've already talked about that because this is the year when we've never had an ending fund balance as high as we've had it before. So the need to transfer or to a budget to transfer in from the, from the motor vehicle fund is probably not as great. I would recommend that we, that we continue to do so only because, you know, for a couple of reasons. One, it gives us more flexibility. I'm always, you might know me enough, be enough, well enough by now to know that I like flexibility. So, you know, it gives us flexibility in case things gets kind of squirrely on us next year. But again, it's just kind of keeps it in the back pocket and something that we can pull out if, if we. So that's policy number two. Policy three, it, it is probably our busiest policy because it's kind of morphed over the years. And it basically is a couple of different parts, you know? The first part is that we would transfer in two and a half percent, or I should say transfer out two and a half percent of the general fund revenues out from the general fund and into the CIP fund, the Capital Projects Fund. So again, it's, the purpose of this fund is, is to just make sure that we're continually to invest in infrastructure and, and IT, you know, technology. Again, this was one of those lessons that we learned coming out of the Great Recession. We, we stopped our technology refresh and we delayed a lot of our CIP projects. And, you know, we found out that that became very expensive very quickly when we did that. We, we need to maintain, you know, all, all these things and, and keep going forward. So this was designed to say, hey, you know, let's, let's set aside a percentage of our revenues, at least to, to, to put money over there. We don't have to put the full amount. So as you'll see in this top box here, some years, and this, then this happens every other year, you know, where sometimes we fund the full amount and sometimes we don't. So like the fiscal twenty-one estimates, we had a need to, at the time, remember this is before pandemic, you know, hit us. We were looking to fund the new needs and we decided to, to fund less into our CIP fund and, and to keep more into the general fund in order to maintain our ending fund balance. That's how the holistic approach looks, you know, maintain the fiscal stability of our fund balance and not transfer so much. You know, because again, you know, we were trying to fund some new needs. And then the pandemic hit and everything happened. So, you know, everything went squirrely on us. But at the end of the day, that is an analysis that we look. So even, you know, it's a good example of where we have these policies and we set them, but we don't paint ourselves into a corner. It's really just a guidance. And so what we, what we've done on this tentative budget is to, is to transfer two point one million dollars, which is equivalent of about two and a half percent of our, of our budgeted revenues. Then the same thing with the funding of IT. So the actual policy is that we'll transfer two and a half percent of our revenues plus IT needs as, as identified in the refresh project. So again, now this is an area that we've done better in the last several years in that we've funded them a hundred percent in the, in the last several years. The needs haven't been, you know, horrifically high. So, you know, those, those are areas that, you know, we've needed to address. And fortunately, as we look at going into fiscal twenty-two, our needs are going to be a little bit lower this year just because we were able to spend or use the CARES Act money. And that helped a lot of our technology when we're looking into helping our employees work remotely. That gave us the opportunity to refresh a lot of monitors and laptops and, and things like that. So we were able to use the CARES Act. And so again, as we look out into fiscal twenty-two, our needs and software and, and hardware aren't as great as sometimes they might be, you know, just on any given year.
Hey Jeff, one quick question on that.
Absolutely.
So we did talk at the beginning when all this COVID hit, that we were putting some projects aside for IT. And with that, there are some things obviously CARES Act could do, some things probably CARES Act couldn't do, would be my guess. Are we walking into this next year with a wisdom to put a little bit, to think about more to catch up? Or are we there? Are we fine? Do we know? Or is that going to come in new, I mean, I know we're going to talk about that new needs, but the problem is we're still talking about old needs. So it affects our conversation today.
Right, yeah. And this primarily is addressing old needs from the standpoint of, of, you know, these, these are, these are functions of the refresh, you know, aspect. So, you know, it's things like laptops and monitors at the base level. But yes, it's absolutely things that, that, you know, the CARES Act was able to, to handle at that level, as long as it was used to, to help people work remotely and, and keep that social distance part of it. That, that fell under, under the CARES Act that was eligible for that. But the things that, that aren't like software needs, you know, the ongoing operations, you know, that wouldn't be cared, taken, taken care of through the CARES Act. So these are ongoing needs that we're, that we just face every year. And, and it could be anything from, it could be anything from infrastructure, you know, our, our servers or our Wi-Fi connections, things like that, that, that just needs constant, you know, updating and, and refreshing. So that's the kind of, that's the kind of, of things that we have. So, but there are some new need impacts as well that, that are, that are brand new outside of the, the normal ongoing activities.
I do understand, I understand what you just said. I get, I get what this is. But I, my question is, is there some things from this last year we did not do? Because we decided to put it aside because that was part of that conversation. So going in next year, is there, I mean, in looking to do something a little bit more with this budget? So we can catch up and be where we need to be or, or we, okay? And again, I kind of know we're talking about new needs, but just because it mixes together, is there, it could cause us to want to tweak and look at this policy a little bit.
Yeah, actually this year, we're, we're in really good shape. We, we didn't have to delay anything. So we're, we're actually in a place where we're not finding ourselves having to catch up. And again, partly that, part of that is because we've been addressing this over the last couple of years. You'll notice, you know, on the status, now I've only, you know, included three years here, just to kind of keep things, you know, succinct. But this is pretty normal to see these, these green status checks, which basically means that, you know, as we've identified the actual needs, and you'll notice that this isn't a percentage of revenues or anything like that. This is just based on actual needs that we've, that we, our IT department has pulled the different departments and, and, and items that they know, you know, that they need. And, and this is, so they, they create their, their wish, if you will, saying, hey, we need these things in the coming year just to keep things going. And we've been able to fund that as we go. So, so, you know, when I say that we're in a really good shape, that's a combination of a couple of things. One, because we've been diligent and, and, and addressing routinely and not undercutting our, 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 our needs, if you will. And then also too, from the CARES Act, really kind of put us over the top a little bit, letting us, giving us some, some wiggle room in that it was able to cover a lot of our laptops and monitors and things like that. Does that help? Yeah. Okay. The second piece to our third policy, again, this is kind of morphed over a little bit in the three A. We've kind of labeled these three A and three B. If you recall, and I, I can't remember the year we did this now, it's only a couple of years ago, when we rewrote the, the gas and electric franchise fee agreement such that it allows council every year to reallocate where the five percent, and if you recall, it's a five percent fee that's generated from that, from those, from the gas and electric, where those are allocated. And currently it's two percent general fund, two percent road fund, one percent of Parks and Rec project fund. A couple of years back, and I believe it was eighteen or seventeen, I think it was fiscal year eighteen, where we reallocated one percent into the Parks and Rec general fund or Parks and Rec project fund for GERP turf replacement. We, we had to do that one year and then only one year. And then after that, in subsequent years, we went back to the traditional funding model of the two, two percent, two percent, one percent, you know, split. So this is, this is kind of the, the time that we've allocated each year to say, hey, is this funding, you know, model work? Is it still generating the, the right revenues? And so far it is. So, you know, from our perspective, I, you know, I wouldn't, I'm not recommending, and I think I don't want to put words in Neil's mouth. I don't think he's recommending any change to this split, but this is certainly, you know, your opportunity to do so. So just to kind of give you an idea, one percent of that fee, so it's a five percentage fee, one percent percentage point of that generates about a million dollars. So just to kind of, you know, give you some, some dollar, you know, context. Three B is, is really just more of a designation of, you know, how are we going to spend the marijuana licensing fees? And we've done this, you know, ever since marijuana came online. And so we've settled into the CIP need of about eight hundred thousand dollars a year for, for the turf replacement. And, and again, that'll be shown to you when we get into our workshop next month. But that's, that's still the plan as we look forward to into fiscal, fiscal twenty-two. And then we've just specifically said, hey, part of the transfer that's coming from the general fund, we're, we're designating the revenue source. So we're just saying that the IT hardware and software replacement plans, yes, we're going to fund it from the general fund, but we've identified that the source is coming from the marijuana license fees. So that's what that means. You know, so I kind of hope that's, that clarifies it, but that's kind of, it's morphed over the years and that, and that's kind of where we landed. So as it looks for, for this current year, if I can just back up one slide, if you look at our, at our IT piece, we break it down, the hardware and the software, that is what was, what's ended up being funding or funded out of the marijuana license fee. So it, we're talking equivalents here. So it's still, you know, six hundred fifty thousand dollars of IT hardware, software. We're just saying it's being funded from marijuana license. So just to kind of give you an idea, the, the dollar amount, where we're projecting right now about one point nine million dollars to be generated in marijuana license fees for fiscal twenty-two. So the remainder of this, you know, which is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is just going into the general fund ending fund balance. So meaning that it's not designated for any purpose. Okay? That's the third one. The fourth one's a, a pretty straightforward, you know? This is the, this is the difference between the, the contingency budget in that this is called the stabilization fund. And NRS, you know, allows us to, to build that up and it can't be any more than ten percent of our expenditures, which we're well under, you know, we're nowhere near the, the, the limit. And frankly, we, we erased this fund during the recession. Um, and frankly, we, we, um, erased this fund during the recession. And then since then, we've only had to tap into it a couple of times, honestly. Uh, I think the last one being in the two thousand seventeen, um, uh, time period with the, the big snows that we had. And, and so we had to tap into it there. We, we were thinking that we needed to tap into this, uh, in the current fiscal year, um, or last fiscal year when, when, uh, the pandemic hit. So we were ready to do so, but, uh, we, fortunately, we just did, we didn't need to. Um, as you can see how our ending fund balance is, it just didn't come to fruition. So the difference with this policy is that we can only tap these funds. And again, this is, this is, uh, distinct from the contingency budget in that these are actual dollars that are set aside. This is our rainy day fund. And we've set these aside from the general fund. It's in a separate fund all by itself and we call it the stabilization fund, but we can only get into it. We can only tap it for two different reasons. Um, and again, this is part of our policy. And so, you know, I label it down here, um, specifically how it read in, uh, as we passed it in, in June of two thousand eleven, um, in compliance with GASB fifty four. But, uh, basically we can only tap it if the general fund revenues decreased by four percent or more from the previous fiscal year or if there's any, uh, natural disaster, um, or formal declaration of emergency, like the pandemic that we have and are currently under. So, you know, we can still tap these funds if we need to, if, if this pandemic, uh, you know, got squirrely on us again. So as it stands, uh, since the recession, when we, when we zeroed this out essentially, um, uh, we, we, we came to a conclusion that we wanted to build this back up, but do it so slowly and kinda soft shoe it. And, uh, at the end of the day, we're looking at next year having about one point two million dollars. So, you know, we're, we're kinda at that stage where, okay, we've been building this up at about two hundred thousand dollars per year. Um, and the formality of this is that we're committing, and that's just a accounting technical term, we're, we're committing two hundred thousand dollars of our business license fees. Uh, accounting regs said we had to be, be very specific in which revenue source that we're committing to go from the general fund into the, um, stabilization fund. And we've identified the, the business license receipts. Nothing magical about that. We just had to identify a revenue source. And so, so we've been, um, taking formal action to commit a certain amount of our business license fees to, to, to go into the stabilization fund. Um, so we've been doing that about two hundred thousand dollars a year. So now we just kinda have to have a conversation if, if we wanna continue this. We currently have about a million dollars. By the end of next year, if we don't tap into it, we expect to have about a million point two. Um, and then we just need to see, you know, wha- what kind of a level that we're comfortable with. So we can revisit this.
So I do have a quick question on that.
Absolutely.
So in a year and a half, two years, this emergency, just for clarity, so the emergency would be taken away, which means we could not tap this, even if we have low finances and are struggling and things turn, it just means we're going through a hard economy time, but this would only help in an emergency setting. So right now we say that it could help us now, but that would end. And so upping this doesn't really solve some of the problem that I foresee if the next couple of years don't go in a good trajectory. Am I speaking correctly?
It would only if, um, the revenues drop by four percent or more. And it's not any specific revenue source, it would be the total revenue. So that's, it's a fairly significant amount. Um, so yes, to your point, i- if, if our, if our revenues stay, even if they drop, say maybe a percent or two, we wouldn't be able to, to tap into this. And if the emergency goes away, unless there's another emergency that's declared, this money would be kind of off limits. So, uh, it's, it's really designed to be, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, did you say drop by four or two four?
Um, by four percent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So it has to decrease. Yep. Decrease more percent or more from the previous year.
Jeff, just for context, how much is four percent of our general fund budget this year?
Oh, let's see, our ending fund balance, or I mean, our, our general fund revenues, uh, are in that eighty to eighty-five million range on, on, on any given year. So if it happened this year, uh, we're kind of in that, in that eighty million dollar range. Again, it's only revenue, so it wouldn't have to include that transfer in that we got from the CARES Act. Um, so, so four percent of eighty million, um, what is that? What's, what's my math? One point two mil, yeah.
Three, three point two million.
Yep.
So, I mean, if we're dropping, this is something to consider, and we'll move past this. If we're dropping three point two million and we have one point two million, that still leaves us a gap of two million bucks. So just something to consider for the next phase of this conversation. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, the fifth policy, pretty straightforward, pretty simple. Uh, and just, the purpose of it is, is just to maintain a, a balanced spending model, if you will. Um, again, like a lot of these, you'll notice these fiscal years all, you know, generating the recession when we pass these. Uh, and they sometimes morph a little bit, but, uh, but, but we last officially, um, adjusted this policy in fiscal thirteen to land on that seventy-eight percent. Um, and, and what it basically means is that we don't want our, our, um, uh, general fund expenditures to be overbalanced, you know, out of balance in any, any one area. When we were in the recession, we were tickling ninety percent or higher of our, of our, uh, revenues, not just of our expenses, but of our revenues, um, which basically meant that we didn't have any money left over to operate. So, you know, we could certainly pay our people, um, you know, because we are a service organization, but we didn't have the, that left us with a out of balance, uh, spending model such that they didn't have the tools to do their jobs. Um, you know, and that's when parks go brown and, you know, all kinds of things happen. Refresh, you know, doesn't happen. And, you know, that's when we had to make some very radical, you know, changes. So, um, you know, unfortunately, we had, that's when we had to go through our, our staffing reductions, you know, and get that back into balance. But since then, um, when we look at our his, history, we've kind of in that seventy-five to eighty percent range is our sweet spot as far as how much we're spending to, on, 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 um, personnel and benefits, you know, that's the whole, the whole component. So our personnel costs versus everything else. So, um, you know, we landed on the seventy-eight percent, which kinda splits the difference between, you know, seventy-five and eighty percent is kind of in that sweet spot. And we've been operating, um, you know, right in there, um, you know, really ever since these policies have been developed. The last one, um, is, uh, here, here you go, Mayor Lawson, here, here, here are your liabilities. So these are some really big numbers. And, and, you know, we talk about this every year and, and the policy is, is such that it's not really, you know, designed to, uh, uh, do, do much other than saying, hey, acknowledge that they're out there and hey, we've gotta fund these. Uh, there, there, there's a lot of different ways we can fund these, either just pay as you go, which was how we've been doing it ever since. And, and that's our current, you know, recommendation, you know, going forward. We wouldn't, uh, recommend doing other, other than that. However, we do have an option of setting money aside in a irrevocable trust, for example, uh, to, to address the OPEB obligation that you were talking about, Mayor Lawson. So we do have, um, options on some of these, but not on all of these. Like, so for example, the biggest one on there, the pension liability, the eighty-nine point four million dollars that you see there, that's just this big nasty number. Um, that's not something that we're actually ever going to pay. So it's, it's our portion, the city's portion of the, the net deficit liability that, that, um, at PERS, at, at PERS-wide statewide level. So again, that came on our books, uh, several years ago as a result of GASB basically saying, hey, you've gotta put this on your books, this is a liability. Um, I have argued, you know, I've argued that, 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 that that's not the case in Nevada. Uh, there's actually a state law that basically says, uh, pension liability is not the responsibility. Um, should the whole thing blow up and, and, uh, you know, it, it basically gets on its ear and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, states and agencies and local agencies have to go bankrupt and all that. Uh, I mean, these are, these are radical discussions. But at the end of the day, that liability is not due from the City of Sparks. However, we have to put it on our books. So it's on there, it's a liability that we pay through our contributions. Um, and that's the PERS rate contributions. And you'll notice that they keep going up. That's to address that pension liability and that's our portion. And that's how we pay that liability. At no point will I ever, um, as a finance director, have to pay a, a, a pension check to one of our retirees. We're, we're just not, uh, we don't operate that way in Nevada. So, but regardless, uh, GASB said, put it on your books and, you know, so we had to comply and, and every agency in Nevada is the same boat. Um, the other ones, uh, again, we talked about workers' comp. That is an area that we, that we can address to this, to the point that we don't manage the, the, um, the, uh, benefits per se, but we can manage how we fund that. Um, we don't have the option of putting any irrevocable trust fund like we do the OPEB obligation, but we can sock away money in our own, in our own, uh, workers' compensation fund. So, um, the other ones are, are just really tied to, uh, uh, you know, attrition, sick leave compensation or sick leave conversion, which is used, uh, a benefit that people, um, can have upon retirement. They can, they can, they can convert their, their sick leave balances into, if they're eligible and if they qualify, into a balance that they can use to pay for their health insurance premiums. Um, and then compensated absences is, is pretty standard for, for every, um, you know, organization. Uh, that's just your annual leave and your, and your sick leave, um, that's allowed to be used throughout the year. So the big ones on there are the pension liability, which we can't do much about, OPEB obligation, uh, you know, we, we really can't do a whole lot about. Um, but we can fund that. Um, I've never advocated for the, uh, putting, uh, setting up an irrevocable trust, uh, simply because the, uh, inflexibility that that would require from our finances. But it's certainly, it's certainly an option. So those are our six policies. Uh, you know, we, 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 we tried to, you know, develop these such that, uh, again, they're from a holistic approach. They do, um, weave in and, and work well together. This, these have served us well over the course of time since we've coming out of the recession. Um, you know, we've modified them as we go, you know, as, as, as conditions dictate. Um, and so I think now is a good time just to have the conversation of, uh, are these working? Do you like these? Any one in particular you don't like or wanna change or, you know, are we good? Um, I, I turn it back to you.
All right. Questions from the council? Do you have a page where you have just summarized all six of them, Jeff, or not?
You know, I don't actually.
Okay. So let's go back to number one and see that's, okay, discussion there.
Too far. Oh, how did that happen? Wow, hold on. Excuse me. I, I think I hit the wrong button. Please bear with me. Let me get to, back to where we were.
Rookie move.
Oh my goodness. I think I hit the home button instead of the page down. I have a new, I have a new keyboard, so I'm gonna blame my keyboard. I never blame the operator.
Homie button. Okay. Questions or comments on this policy from the council?
Mayor Lawson.
Yes, please.
Um, Jeff, as we're looking at, and I've already commented the thirteen point eight, which is very, uh, like I said, higher than I've seen, but with the city manager's comments that new needs are not included. Uh, is that something with new needs that'll come in our CIP? Will it come as part of this budget discussion? And obviously that thirteen point eight is that where we possibly can look at it an adjustment because, um, we can't ignore, you know, we can't ignore the new needs. And if we're in a fiscal situation that we're above that twelve point five percent, I see some room for, um, for working with this number because we have new needs, fire station six being just one of them, that, uh, we can have that discussion. But tell me if I'm wrong, if where that money would come from and where we could adjust.
Neil, would you like to address your timing of new needs first?
I mean, I, you know, yeah, I, 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 as I mentioned earlier, I'm not, I'm not quite done with the, with the new needs analysis so that we could have a full conversation today. But I do anticipate being able to come to you and have that full conversation in the next two to three to four weeks. So that, you know, certainly in advance of the CIP workshop that we're having four weeks from today, we will have had a, uh, we will have had a, a new needs conversation. So you will, you will at least have seen a, an initial recommendation from me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And just for a little historical, uh, perspective, you know, I've, I've been on the council for ten years now. But we always finish about three percent higher than where we budget for. And that's a lot of it just from the vacancies and stuff. So for me, I'm okay with the eight point three if we budget to that. Um, because we know we're gonna end up at, you know, eleven or twelve point three in that area, um, which gives us flexibility. But it also gives Neil the flexibility for those new needs that should he, you know, have the, the right time and the right opportunity and the right pricing that we can pull the trigger on some things and make some stuff happen. But I'm, I'm open to any other comments or questions from the council.
So, it's Christopher. My, my, my only concern is some of the unknown. Obviously, it's all of our concern and it's, we, none of us want to just run forward. I, I just, and, and the new needs are crucial. I mean, we, uh, I mean, fire station. And there's other things like that, the playground that is, needs to be built that we've, you know, we have people donated to. We have different things that must seem to move forward quickly. And so I just wanna make sure though, I never like when we can't really predict out a couple of years like we would like to because it just seems like there's too many unknowns. It's, I, I, if there's any way to make sure we have a small, little bit better buffer to whether whatever storm might come, it would just seem wise. It doesn't mean, I, for me, if it's just me deciding, obviously it's not. I'm not asking for a huge change in huge policies and things like that. I'm just asking, what is the best way for us to make sure we are wise? Here, with flexibility is fine. That's, that's fine. It's not that I wanna control that. But I just wanna make sure that the CPI, you know, uh, capital improvements don't hit and all of a sudden we find ourselves, things tweak. And then, I mean, I, I, and none of us wanna find ourselves there, but now's the time where we try to project ahead and say, let's, let's have some wisdom here. And so if we do what we've always done, we do good, we do okay. I mean, I'm not complaining, we, we end up, but I don't know that that would take care of that void of the unknown for me. Does that, I hope that makes sense. I, I, I think our policies have been sound and, you know, and Ed, you have convinced me that we do end out with three percent. At first I didn't believe you, you know that. I looked at you like you're crazy, like, what? But it is true. I, I, I've seen it every year and, and part of it has to do with our staff and our leadership. You guys do a great job of fiscally, um, being, being wise as we can. But no amount of wisdom from us is going to help what this, what this could do in our community. We, so I think we have to have something in there for the unknown, is my thought.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna concur with you and Councilwoman Bybee because, um, I think it's important to give staff the flexibility, especially when we're looking for land and a new fire station and things like that. And right now those are unknowns, especially with land costs and construction costs. So I'm comfortable where it sits.
I, I agree as well. I'm good with where we're at. We've been maintaining that for a while. And even with what happened this last year, we're, obviously we got some help, but I think we're still doing okay.
Mr. Anderson, you wanna weigh in on this?
Yes, please. So I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Dare that, I mean, none of us predicted what we saw this last year. And I really, I'm concerned, I mean, if it weren't for CARES Act funds, what we would have seen, how the different contingency funds, everything would have been tapped into. I would personally like to see this come up some, um, simply for what we've seen this last year and what may still come to be. But a- again, I understand, I mean, we, we've been pretty tight on expenditures and, and helping out some of the departments. I, I guess, um, I guess I'm, I'm saying the eight point three, knowing that, um, odds are we're gonna come out better than that. But I do believe in the future, we have to do what we can to raise that, raise that amount or the target amount.
And I, can I just speak on that too? And I almost, instead of me saying, I, I'm probably asking the question, what is the best way for us to have, because I, I don't, I wouldn't assume necessarily raising both. Everything kinda has its unintended consequences. If we're not careful, we, we, we lose stability in this and that. Uh, I just, I would just like to hope there's something that we can do that would show some wisdom. Maybe it's increasing our bottom line. I mean, truthfully, I mean, we could live through a few percent up or down. We've done that before and we could, you know, these guys do a great job and we, we can make some stretches. Maybe, maybe it is just putting a little extra money into our contingency fund, letting this stay where it's at, knowing that we're just really bolstering our foundation a little bit more. But, but my brain, where we're in trouble is if it would drop like four percent. That's a, that's a, you know, and, and yes, we, we, we say, well, the federal government would be there. We don't know that. I mean, we didn't know that this round. And with all that they're doing, at some point, there's only so much they're gonna be able to do. They can't just keep doing this. You know, this is a, uh, unprecedented time that I ca- I can't imagine that they're just gonna keep finding ways to throw money our way. So, um, that's, so I am kinda asking the question, let's say, let's say we didn't touch our ending fund balance. We kept these policies because it gives flexibility. We know what that does. Is there wisdom then in putting a little bit more over here? And I maybe asked Jeff that. I, I mean.
Remember the, the, the tricky part about doing. Remember the 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 tricky part about doing that, if we if we move money over into the stabilization fund. And remember, that's the only other fund that we have from a contingency perspective, that's actual funded. You would only be able to tap into those dollars only for those two purposes, you know, whether if the if the revenues fall four percent or or more. Or if there's a, there's a, an emergency declared, you know, a formal emergency declared. So so tha- that's, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, you're kinda weighing the the pros and the cons, right? You know, i- i- you wanna sock some money away and and know that I, you know, we really have limited ability to tap into that, into our rainy day fund. Or leave it in the fund balance and where it's at more, more at risk. And that, and that's, you know, tha- tha- that's what you have to weigh.
Well, then I'd also, then I'd also add, and I'd ask Neil. So City Manager Crouch, if we, what if we said, you know, we we wanna have, we wanna be a little more conservative. This, just knowing what we're facing, so we brought this up a little bit, does that hamstring to a place? That that seems, you know, wise on one note, but also unwise on another? Is there a percentage that could even make sense if we wanted to entertain it? That wouldn't, that wouldn't bring us there, you know, I'm not saying we need a ten percent, I'm I I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, are we, are we really playing this looking ahead? Are we just trying to say, well, it worked out this time, so we'll just keep going?
Okay, I I I don't think we are in a, well, it worked this time, so we'll just keep going. I think that we do a, a a good job of of trying to look ahead. Uh, and that's why we're all a little bit squishy about what the economy's going to do in the next year or two, is we are, we are trying to focus out there. And and but I, but I think to, to come back to this fiscal policy number one. If you're, if if your direction today is to leave it at the eight point three. That in itself will constitute a three point three percent increase over the direction you gave me last year when I came and said. Hey, we've got these new needs that I feel like we absolutely have to fill, please let us budget down to five, and you did. And 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 we were able to fill quite a few of those positions, you know, a lot of those predominantly in our, in our police department. And it's been a very successful year in that regard. So asking you to, you know, to to leave policy one untouched this year. Is it's, is in itself, you know, an increase in what we are leaving in the bottom line, in the, in the, you know, in in the ending fund balance. So that we can, you know, weather what comes at us in terms of what the economy is going to do in these, these, you know. Albeit turbulent times. So I I I, that's, that's my request of you today is to let's, let's, let's not go below the eight point three, let's leave it, leave it at eight point three. I I believe that will give us, uh, you know, the the room to bring you a a package of new needs. That is, a- a- at one hand, trying to look towards the future and and secure land. And 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 start funding construction of a sixth fire station, which we, we know we absolutely have to do. It will also give us, you know, some funds for a modest amount of of new needs to, you know, to bring, to bring some service expansion. To our community that, that we know it's desperately in need of. So I, you know, in in terms of this first policy, I think that would be a, a good, you know, conservative middle way to 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 go forward. Not to, not to reset the policy at thirteen point eight and not to go back, you know, and ask for another, you know, reduction down to five. But just to kind of leave it alone, uh, and then, and then come back to policy number four and that contingency fund. And and and, you know, have a a conversation about, you know, knowing that that's money you put into the piggy bank. And you can only break that piggy bank in bad times. You know, wi- with understanding that the the fiscal handcuffs that come with that. Does it still make sense to, you know, a modestly increase what, what you're budgeting to put in there? You know, we've been for the last several years putting in two hundred thousand dollars out of our business license fees. Does it, does it make sense to consider increasing that some amount? I think at at least for, uh, uh, it would be a good conversation for the six of you to have about, you know, do you wanna do that and if so, how much?
And Neil, I appreciate what you just said, I I I, I think that's a very valid point, going from five to eight point three. And I I actually think that I I didn't put that together, so thank you, that, it does bring us to, I think, a balance on that. I, so I would say I'm comfortable with that, knowing, cuz in my brain, I kept thinking we're doing what we did last year. And last year, we were down, right? And that's where, I just, I, I just, I just, I just wanna, if I'm gonna air a little bit, and and believe me, I want, I want this fire state. From day I took office, to, you know, a couple of terms, whatever. So it's not that I'm, I'm not seeing that, I just think, I I guess we all do, we have a big responsibility to try to have a fortune. You know, to see the future and we can't, and so trying to figure that out. But I think that that is, that is a definite good balance, that does bring us up at least. And and I, and I would say that we, we really do hold to that, that would give us some, some wiggle room if we find ourselves in this, in interesting times.
Mayor Lawson.
Yep. Go ahead.
I I I think that eight point three, I know we're looking at what the results could be. And I agree with you, Mayor, that each year, when we set whatever, whether it's five percent or the eight point three, we do tend to be higher. And the stabilization fund is something we could look at, but but I am not, maybe I'm the eternal optimist. And I can't help but look at this last year with the pandemic, uh, the worst times ever. I think beyond the 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 recession, and yes, we had federal government help that that kept us afloat. But the economy itself and the economy in our region, especially compared to our southern neighbors in Vegas. Still like amazingly strong, and I know Mr. Kronk has every month in our updates. We're still kind of blown away by the C-Tax, and it makes no sense of why the C-Tax has stayed. As good as it has in such really rough economic times. So I think the economic, the worst economic times were past. And I just see things moving as the economy gets to reopen, as, you know, people are back to work. Businesses, restaurants, bars, retail are recovering, I only see an upward trajectory. So I'm not concerned that we are not mindful. And I know that Mr. Kronk and our whole leadership group has always been fiscally, they're very responsible, very conservative. Uh, and and I trust all of our budget decisions have kept us, you know, kept us afloat in really rough times. And I think the eight point three is a, gives us the ability to do the things we need to do. But I'm not concerned that we're undercutting ourselves and that we're going to be, uh, you know, that something's going. I mean, granted, we don't know, we don't know the pandemic was gonna hit, so we have no idea. None of us have a crystal ball for this year, next year, the following year. But I think all overall, looking at, um, you know, the fiscal weather, if you may, and Mr. Kronk is an expert at that. Uh, I'm, I'm very confident in the eight point three and in our stabilization fund. And we could have that conversation if we think that needs a little bit of tweaking, but I'm not at all, I'm not concerned at all that we're not going to all of a sudden find something. That, uh, that we can't fiscally address with the policies that we have in place, thank you.
All right, anyone else? So am I getting a consensus, do we need a vote or do we, what do we need to do here, Neil?
Do you, uh, I I I don't know that we we specifically need a a a vote. I, Ed, for certain, I don't think we need, we need, you know, six different votes, one, one by policy. I'm, I'm picking up on on on, on really, the the conversation is centering around two. And, you know, and it's policy number one is the first of the two, and policy number four is is the second of the two, the contingency fund. I think my my read of what the conversation this morning is, you're all are quite comfortable with, uh, with, you know, the, the other policies. I I I think you've now reached consensus on policy one, that you're comfortable at at eight point three. And if I misread that, somebody please hit me upside the head, I'm, I, you know, I I can, I can take it, I've been hit by hard things before. So I think with with that, you know, if we're, if we're ready to to say, all right, we'll, we'll leave policy one unchanged this year. And we'll leave it at eight point three and budget to that, let's move down to policy four and talk about, you know, what if any changes you wanna make to the amount? We, we stick in that contingency fund, does two hundred thousand dollars a year continue to work for you? Do you wanna see that go up, do you wanna see it go down? And then, and then when we get done with that part of the conversation, you know, if, uh, I I think at that point, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about a motion. Then it makes sense and it would be one motion that covers all six at the same time.
Okay. All right, let's move on to number two first, Jeff. And our contingency, there's the million dollars, and I know the million dollars is, it's that number because that's what's in the, the automobile fund.
Right.
So I don't see any reason to change that, but I open for questions or comments from the council. Since I can't see anyone.
Mr. Mayor, it's, Andrew, well, I have a question really quick for Mr. Kronk. If I remember correctly, earlier on, you had possibly suggested we look at putting a little more in here. Because of the forecast, uh, we may start having to pay out more.
Well, I I don't think I would recommend necessarily putting, putting extra in here. Primarily because we 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 haven't needed it in the past, and I don't anticipate needing it, um, uh, you know, in in the future. And if, and if we need to, we have other means of addressing it, meaning like, if if expense needs come up that are grant funded, we'll be able to, you know, augment our budget. This is really just our ability to augment our budget, um, and a million dollars works very well for our organization. It just so happens to tie to that transfer from the vehicle fund, which is also how we manage the vehicle fund and keeping reserves in there. To the, to the extent that we can cover this transfer, should it be needed. So I would, yeah.
And and then I have a follow up question, so when any of the departments are applying for grants? Is it this general fund contingency that is used for the match?
Uh, it can be, the the contingency can be used for really any purpose whatsoever. It's really, it can be used for anything as long as council approves it, that that that's the, that's the the piece to it. Council has to have proven if it can be used for any purpose whatsoever, that wasn't included in the budget before. So it's really, it's really, um, got all kinds of flexibility to it.
Okay.
So yeah, so specifically, it could be for grant match, it could, it could be for anything.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other question or comments? All right, see none, I'm assuming that we're okay with that, let's move on to three. And questions or comments on this, this one is a little more complicated, but I, we worked hard to get this right, uh, about eight years ago. And I think it works pretty darn good.
And and we have a a separate workshop planned four weeks from today, just to focus on, you know, the 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 planning behind how these, how these transfers would be used. So we will, we will dive into the weeds, uh, you know, four weeks from today for you there and show you what our, what our plan is.
Okay.
The only one that wouldn't, uh, directly tie is necessarily, um, you know, if we wanted to change this, uh, funding mechanism. But again, that could also come out of that CIP, um, discussion, absolutely. But not necessarily, I I guess that's what I was trying to, it doesn't have to tie to the CIP, but it, but it it likely could. Because as you'll see, a lot of this funding is going to CIP, um, you know, funds. So so we could either have that conversation then and have it more, again, more holistically. Or or certainly now, if you guys see something fundamentally problematic with this, um, um, breakdown of the electric and gas franchisees.
I I have a quick question on this, so I think you just mentioned some of it, so it doesn't have some of the new needs in here potentially. Cuz you're still working on some of those, I think, but I do know one of the, we talked about was with Public Works, they are updating, updating. Quite a bit of things with IT, is that in this budget, are we, is, or?
Yeah, short answer, yes. Yeah, and that'll be revealed at the CIP, we're gonna have a separate, uh, or or part of the CIP conversation is gonna focus on technology. But to to answer your question, yeah, we we've, we've already included that into this tentative budget.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, see none, let's move on to four.
Whoops, there we go, too, too quick on the fingers. Yeah, so this is, this is the one we're talking about as far as the the stabilization fund, which is different than the contingency budget. This is the separate fund where we we set aside dollars and we've been setting aside, you know, two hundred thousand dollars per year for for some time now. So, you know, the question is, do we wanna continue that, do we wanna stop? If we stop, this one point two million dollars, uh, it will, will not be there if we don't decide to put two hundred thousand. Cuz right now, we're at about a million dollars, so just to kind of give you some context where we're at.
All right, questions from the council? Comments?
I I do have a question.
Anderson, go ahead.
Um, Jeff, could you please let me know historically, I mean, I know that during the, the, um, Great Recession. This, this got hit pretty heavily, but historically, when and how have we tapped into that? And what kind of hit has the fund taken?
Yeah, very rarely have we hit this. Twice, maybe three times, uh, at least in my time here. And really, because revenues fell off a cliff during the recession, that's really when we used it. And we, and we zeroed out the fund at that point, you know, there were, there was a few years where we didn't have anything in that fund. But it was raining pretty hard then, right? So so since then, since then, since the recession, we've only used it one time, um, and that was in two thousand seventeen. And we had to tap into it for a few, a few hundred thousand dollars, I don't remember exactly how much, but it it wasn't, it wasn't the whole amount. It was just a couple hundred thousand dollars to to help us with the, um, the, the snow events, events that happened that year.
Thank, thank you, and then I I guess to get up to, um. What's the maximum that we've had in it typically, like, a- again, leading up to the recession?
Right, we we've actually never had, um, any higher than about where we're at right now. When we, when we were getting into the recession, uh, we were right at that million dollar range, uh, maybe even just slightly under it. So historically, we're, we're at a historic high.
Okay, that, that was kind of where I was heading with it, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, pretty, pretty close to before recession, if if I could put it that way.
Okay, and I guess with that being said, I'll just finish with the comment that I, I would agree with where the recommendation is on here. And holding it to two hundred thousand.
Mayor Lawson.
Wait, go ahead.
So, so Jeff, on this fund. Obviously, we're a little, um, I mean, it's there when we do need it. But the only two uses are if our general fund revenue decreases by four percent or more, which the recession it did. And then my question, I guess, is the other, um, ins- you know, instance in when we can use it. Is to expat, pay expenses incurred to mitigate effects of a natural disaster. When we do have natural disaster like our flood, uh, flood weather, whatever. We also are eligible to put in for FEMA and other federal relief. I know we pay the bill and then hope that we get some of that back. But is that, uh, some of our mitigating our natural disaster can come in the form of FEMA or federal money? And we wouldn't have to necessarily use, or if we did, we could reimburse this fund if we needed to use it?
Yes, and and that's kind of exactly what happened in two thousand seventeen. So, um, there there are separate discussions, you know, or, you know, conversations as far as, you know, one, do you want to, um, approach FEMA for reimbursement? Generally, the question is, or the answer is yes, but, uh, they can be so, you know, difficult to work with, the answer may be no sometimes. You may not wanna even deal with them, kind of depends on the level of of expense that you're, that you're, that you're talking about. But i- in a sense, yes, you're absolutely right, if we were in a natural disaster situation, we can tap into this, drain this fund if we need to. Um, and then seek reimbursement from FEMA, which could take several years, um, and and often does. So, but then we can replenish that, um, uh, once those funds come in. Or again, just build it up over the course of time. The problem with waiting on FEMA is that it, it's just that, you're waiting on FEMA. So if we were to drain this, um, what, how we've approached this before is that, you know, we take matters into our own hands and we wanna build it back ourselves. Because you don't wanna go, you know, for too long of a period of time without having a rainy day fund. Um, and then we end up having, um, FEMA reimburse the general fund, that's how we've done it before, just so we can always have something out there. You know, i- i- some resources should a natural disaster, um, happen, but we do have some flexibility, uh, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, it does, thank you for that clarification. And, um, you know, I'm fine, the amount we're committed, uh, if we wanted to slightly raise that for more stability. I'd be okay with that, but I I really have no problem with, uh, what you've got here as a recommendation today, thank you.
So I I have a thought on this, so. I mean, I think it's great that it's in here, one of the things I I just don't know is, is there any suggested amount that we could say? I mean, is there other, do we know what other cities might do, what, you know, or, I hear where our history is. And, I mean, is there a wisdom for us to kind of get to the place where we have one point five million set aside? And then we're good to say, you know, we feel good about this. And I, and and part of it is, we do have an ending fund balance that, in a sense, was federally pushed. I mean, is there a wisdom to say, let's get this to a place where we feel good? I mean, is there a wisdom to say, let's get this to a place where we feel good? It's just a thought. I know that we have needs, we have things, we have definitely things in our city. But I just wonder if there's something to that and then, and then we can feel comfortable that we have a good cushion here for an emergency. I mean, I don't know the right number. Again, I, it's hard to know what that could be. It's just kind of, kind of a thought, but is, I don't, I don't know if there's an appetite to think about that, but we, we're, we may not find ourselves in another position to have some extra Indian fund balance like this again. And with that said, do, would we want to set ourselves up for that kind of time? And so just part of the conversation to have and just being wise. So. But I, I would suggest without question that we keep the 200,000 based upon the unknowns. I just, I just wonder if we would want to maybe just bring it to 1.5 and maybe something like that and get to a place where we, we use some of this funding to get us to a solid place and, and maybe really study it, what would be a good thing to have in this contingency? I know we can't touch it for except extreme reasons. And, but those extreme reasons, we do know there are some cities have been, have been in itself a lot more trouble than we found ourselves across our state because they weren't prepared at all. We didn't have the contingencies that we, we, we have put in place. And so I think our policies are wise and what we've done is good. I'm just looking to see, is there anything we can, we can do? So those are my thoughts. I don't know if I know the right answer. I know I wouldn't not put 200,000 in there. My question is, are we thinking, would it be wise to put a little bit more?
Anyone else on the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. And I realize that, no, we can't forecast and things like that. But as far as annual business receipts, since we still have not seen the end of possibly some of our small businesses closing, could this affect or not affect the amount that we've committed? I don't know who to ask the question to. So if you have a crystal ball, Mr. Krunk, I'd love to see it.
I can at least provide a little context. So just from a, from a dollar perspective, the $200,000 that we're committing at a business license is actually very small. Our business license revenue in a normal year, whatever that means anymore, right? But in a normal year is about $6 million. So it's, it's a fairly significant dollar amount, and that's one of the reasons we chose that particular revenue source because on a percentage basis, it's, it's so small.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Anybody else? The only thing that comes to my mind, Jeff, is what if we tied that to the increase in the budget? You know, we have a minimum 200,000, but you know, notice between 21 and 22, you know, we went up 1.1 million, which, you know, technically, we should probably put a few more dollars in to add to the 200,000.
If I can follow up, this is one of those areas that's kind of squishy. So if I can, if I can make an analogy, I do a lot of counseling for people on their personal budgets, and it's the same conversation, kind of, you know, asking themselves, you know, if you're sitting down with a married couple, for example, how much money should I keep in my savings? You know, how much money should I have as a, as a, as a buffer in my checking account or whatever? And there is no right answer. You know, there, there's a, you know, sometimes you'll hear it. If, again, if I continue that personal analogy, they'll say, you know, four to six months of expenditures, keep it in the rainy day fund. That doesn't really apply too well to, to our, to our, you know, circumstances in, in a government. So it really becomes this, this kind of concept of what are you most comfortable with? You know, what, what is that, that level? And it becomes almost a dollar, dollar threshold, you know? For some, a million dollars will be fine. For others, it'd be $5 million. Or, you know, it's just one of those squishy things that, that you kind of have to, to land on. So, you know, there's nothing, you know, really magical. You know, you, you're trying to put a little context on it when maybe you were saying, hey, if a 4% drop in our revenue totals $3 million, maybe that's a good goal. And that's a, that's a great way to approach it. Or you could say, you know, we've, we've only had to tap this to the tune of, you know, maybe 800,000 to a million in the last 10 years. Maybe we're okay where we're at right now because historically, you know, recent history is that this has worked out really well for us. So, you know, it's one of those things that this is hard to gauge because at the end of the day, it's, it's a personal preference, you know? So, so instead of, you know, six, you know, or, you know, multiple different, you know, personal preferences, we kind of have to come, kind of come to a conclusion as a group. And what we've, what we've been operating under, leading up to this point is that we knew we had to sock money away. Now we're kind of getting into that timeframe where we're saying, what's our comfort level? You know, are we, are we comfortable shooting for, you know, that million and a half range? Or are we good where we're at? Do we want to shoot for 3 million? Or just kind of play it as you go and, and keep building this up slowly and soft shoeing it and, and socking some money away. $200,000 is, you know, it's nothing to sneeze at, but it's not a huge amount. So it certainly isn't a, a, a big impact on our budget. So we're still soft shoeing it a little bit. So if you're, if you're comfortable and you want to keep building it up, $200,000 is, is not a bad plan either. So I guess I'm trying to say, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to look at this and it comes down to personal preference.
Well, I know just how quickly that million two can be gone. We could actually with one swipe of a pen spin that probably one day. So that's not a lot of money in my mind. As a matter of fact, it's very little money when you think about it.
You get into a natural disaster. Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, even worse is the economics that we, you know, we dropped 4%. We basically created a $2 million hole already. So now we're back to layoffs and, and, you know, managing by personnel. So I'm okay leaving it there, but I, I'm also okay if you want to bump it up, you know, to 50,000 more just to get a little closer, a little faster. And, you know, we can always change it in the future if it, if it's built up too much money, then we can always change it in the future.
For, for having round numbers, what if, what if we did go to 250 and that would be within the next two years budgeting cycle? We, we know we'd be at 1.5 then. And that's, and then we can make a decision at that point to say, it's just getting past this. You know, part of it is obviously the bigger, bigger picture, I'm a pretty, I'm an optimist like Ms. Bybee. I mean, I, I, I do think the better times are ahead. I'm not doomsdaying. I just don't like reaching out feeling like it's too soft. Three years from now is too soft for me. I can't. I don't, and I have to get out of COVID and kind of have a little bit of a standing thing. And then once we know that, well, we can make some really strong decisions about a lot of things. So I, I like the idea of maybe hitting at the 250 mark. No, we get to 1.5 within a couple of years. Maybe we could, maybe that's what we end up liking and we live with if everything gets strong again. Or if it doesn't, we can, we can make other decisions.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the council then? You want to make a change or leave it alone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would support putting a little bit more in there so we get to a comfortable level. So if 50 is a comfortable level for the council, I would support it.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm good with it too. And I appreciate Christopher's quick math on multiplying that. So I'm good with it.
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask if for manager Croods, if we go up another 50,000, is that, or Mr. Krunk, will that impact our, if we're, as we're looking at new needs, which we haven't looked at at all, does that put us in a crunch at all there? Do we do 225 or 230 instead? I, I think a little bit more is good, but I kind of want to make sure we're good on, as we look at new needs and would this have an impact or not? Because I'd be flexible on which amount we, we go with. Thank you.
I'll, I'll take this one. An extra $50,000 is not going to impact the new needs discussion I'm preparing to have with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I think you have somewhat of a consensus there, Mr. Manager. So let's move on to number five. This one is, this, this one has worked very well for us. Because I do remember when I was running for office, it was 92% of the budget was labor. So you, we, we were non-functional at that point as far as being able to do anything for the city. And this, this thing has worked this, like I said, all the way down to 72. I know we've been at 80% a couple of times, but if riding that, it's a sweet spot. Any comments or questions from the council?
This is Paul Anderson, and I concur with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick question for Mr. Croods. The 76.1%, does that assume all positions are filled?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Perfect. Let's move on to number six then. This is a very complicated deal here. So once again, for historical perspective, my first year, I think our OPEB was around 5.5 million in 2010, if I remember correctly. And then some accounting change somewhere in there, and it, it jumps dramatically to this 43 million today. I don't even know how we would do that. And I really don't think that it makes sense because there's no other city that I'm aware of that's put any money away in the state of Nevada for OPEB obligation. And, and if there is, I, probably a pretty small town. But, and the other ones, obviously, we have, and then pension liability, Jeff explained very well. So for me, it's, I mean, it is what it is at this point. But yeah, I'm looking for questions or comments from the council.
I, I agree with you, sir. I just think, I mean, over the years as we've looked at this, and I think if some reason it goes south, it's going to be a bigger problem than us. So a bigger problem than we can handle. So it's, it is going to be what it is. So I, I agree with that. I think we leave it just where it's at.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Well, it sounds like you've got your marching orders on the six policies, Mr. Croods.
Yes, sir. All right, sir. Just to, just to summarize, we're going to leave them all the same unchanged this year with exception of number four, which we're going to budget to increase to $250,000 to deposit into the contingency fund.
That's what I heard.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Is that it? 11:15. Do you have more?
The last thing, this is, this is up to you. It's, I just put it in your packet. It's designed just to give you an idea. We don't have to talk about this today. This is just a reminder of the different contributions and donations that we make to different nonprofits or for services, like the forensic services, it's more of a heads up, you know? Yeah, that these, these are increasing, like, in fact, like this one to Washoe County, that's a big heads up because that's one we've talked about a lot. And that's what, kind of what all this section is, is really just monies that we, that we spend for, you know, various needs, various purposes or various organizations, whether it's on a contribution or to pay for services. So it's really, you know, designed to say, hey, you know, as a, for example, this forensic services, that's a big jump and that's a big number. And, and we've been talking about that for several years. This isn't a new thing, but you know, the numbers are getting, you know, pretty significant and really doubling just in the last couple of years. So that, in addition, I'll, you know, kind of buzz down a little bit. Other things in here are the CARES campus. These are, you know, we've got $650,000 set aside for homeless, you know, care facilities. That's still unknown. Right now, we're still waiting for some budget discussions, but yet we're approaching this, you know, with, with, this is approximately, you know, two pennies, if you will, of our property taxes. So, you know, these are some large dollars that are out there and, and other things as well as far as, you know, figuring out, I could just buzz through these a little bit as far as the, you know, the contributions that we make to EADON and other organizations. So that's what this, this section is designed to do is just kind of give you a reminder of, you know, some of our obligations, whether self-imposed or otherwise, that, that's out there. And if there are anything, or if there is anything on your radar that you see needing adjustment. And again, we, we, we talk about these every year and we talk about them throughout the year. This is just our one time to kind of put it on paper and say, hey, this is kind of the big picture. You know, is there anything that, that screams at you saying, hey, we have a problem here or, or whatever?
And if I, if I can, I would like to talk just for a minute about that forensic services contract. It's because it's been a few months since we've spoken about it. And actually, I think council member Vanderwell, that might, this might predate your membership on the council. So this might be hitting you for the first time. You know, the, over a year ago, the sheriff, you know, commissioned a study to look at the cost sharing that was being done for how, how the bills are getting paid for the forensic services that the lab provides for us. And, and, and they came to us with a, with a rather large number. They'd been telling us for years that we were underpaying. We were, you know, kind of approaching it on a year by year basis, adding about 50 grand a year to our budget to, to do that. And, and so if we, if we kind of rewind to, I think it was July of last year, I got into a conversation with, with, with my two peers and the, and the three heads of the law enforcement agencies. So it was our, you know, our chief Crawl and, and Chief Soto and Sheriff Balaam. And, and my, my statement to them at the time, and then actually I had a series of follow-up conversations with members of the county commission was that, you know, Sparks in concept wants to, should, is committed to paying its fair share and paying its own way for these services. That, that's not, not an argument that, but that said, we need to be able to see clearly through the analysis that's done so that we can assure ourselves that the money we are putting in is, is coming back to us in terms of the services we provide. That with the report that I saw from the sheriff's office, that I felt it was sufficiently cloudy that I had a whole bunch of questions. And a lot of those were tied into, you know, the, the tangled series of relationships that exist between the sheriff's office and Reno PD because they, they share a common dispatch. So there's some, some, you know, trade for trade kind of service that goes in there that, that clouds it, who's paying for what? And then, so what I said at the point, at that point in time is before we agree to increase the amount that we put in, we need to be able to see clearly through that. It was promised that that analysis would be forthcoming. I understand that the, the conversations between Reno and Washoe County are a bit stuck right now. So we're not seeing clarity. But all of that said, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is a roundabout way of, I still think it's prudent to go ahead and budget what the sheriff thinks we should be paying so that if we can get to the back end of that conversation and, and have clarity on, on what we should be paying for those services, that we have the budget authority to do that, and we don't have to pull ourselves through kind of a knothole and a fence at the last minute if, if we weren't to do that. So that's why you're seeing the jump there in the budget that we're going to bring you, putting a million dollars in that line item so that we have that, you know, that, that capability, if that's the right thing for us to do. That will certainly come, come to you as an updated interlocal agreement so that money doesn't get spent without your authorization. So with that, I'm, I'll be happy to take any questions.
I do have a quick comment on that. Thank, thank you. Thank you for standing up and being in those conversations. Obviously, I know it's ones you've been wanting to have and they're happening, which is fantastic. I, I would ask that we do hold our, hold to what we said though. And I say that it's not our fault that Reno stuck in not having conversations like they should. But I, not that I even think that our sheriff is asking us something that's not true. I don't know that. But we, the fact that we don't know that and some of our other conversations we've had, I think it's really important. On my end, I can't speak for everybody by any means, but I would like to hold them to that. If they have not pushed through those conversations, I don't want to give just this number. And it will just keep going down. Every year, we've been having this conversation since, wow, for me, for the last five years. For some of you, even longer because you were out there before me. This is not a, a new conversation. But I think we have a way to hold it to toe and say, don't come ask us for money if you're not making sense of it. Because I think it's, it actually becomes irresponsible, I think, for us to give out money that does not make sense if it's regional correct. So that'd be my ask.
That's what we're doing.
Neil, I do have a question on the sheriff work crew. I see it's back on our budget and our estimate for last year was 40,000, but we weren't able to use them at all. And hopefully, I'm hoping we are anticipating that we'll use them in this fiscal year. Can you clarify on that for me?
Yes. As a, as a matter of fact, the conversations between the sheriff's office and our community services department just kicked up again within the last couple of weeks. And they are taking place in that 80 to $85,000 range that you see reflected here in, in the budget document in front of you. So I'm, I'm excited to say, yeah, it looks like it's coming back on for us.
Perfect. Glad to, glad to see it. Some of the best spent money that we've allocated in the city for sure. Thank you. Perfect. Glad, glad to see it. Some of the best spent money that we've allocated in the city for sure. Thank you.
So that, that was the one point that I wanted to spend a little bit of time on, just to make sure we all had a common understanding of the situation, was that, was that forensic contract.
And I'll say from my standpoint, Neil, I mean, we've seen this go up, well, nearly two and a half times in 10 years. So I, I mean, if we're throwing a million dollars at it, do we know that's the right number?
We, we, and so far, we don't, you know, we know that, that they're asking for a number at about that range. So that seems like a reasonable ballpark to go ahead and plan for. But then before we actually spend, fund one penny of that, let's, let's make sure we understand it.
Or we hold back 10% and when we get real numbers, we'll, we'll pay you the remainder.
And we, and we took a little bit of a different approach this year where, you know, they wanted a much higher number than the 689.5 that we sent over. And, and we said, well, you know, we, we can't clearly see through what, what your, your analysis at this point in time, because the conversation with Reno was not complete. So here's what we're going to do. We're only going to send you what we've got budgeted and that's what we did. I'm pretty sure that check got cashed.
Okay. Good evening. All right, any other questions from the council? Would that be it?
Awesome. Yeah, thank you very, very much for your time this morning. This was, this is tremendously helpful for us to have this conversation with you. Thank you very much, Jeff, for leading us through that, that conversation. You took, you know, a big set of dollar numbers and a, and a topic that's easy to get lost in the weeds on. And, and were able to hold us all up and keep us at that 30,000 foot level, yet facilitate a functional conversation. So fantastic job.
I'm grateful for the direction. Building our budget is, is a complex issue and this is vital for us because, you know, we, we need to have a council-driven budget and we can't do it without today. So I'm, I'm very grateful for all your comments and engagement and the direction we got.
Are we doing any Sparks redevelopment agency? Are we looking at that later? I just see it on my packet.
Yeah, what I left you on the, on the last part of the, the presentation were slides that I wasn't planning on going over. Those were for reference. Honestly, and, and when it came to redevelopment agency, because those are pretty much debt service and CIP funds, we're going to cover that in a greater conversation as part of the CIP process and then redevelopment in and of itself is a greater conversation. You know, because frankly, like area one is winding down, you know, that, so, so that has different needs than area two and we need to have a separate conversation. So what I gave you today was just kind of a snapshot of, you know, very preliminary.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on and to automate comments from the mayor, council, city manager? We're good on that?
Thank you, everybody. You're awesome.
Very good. All right, Madam Clerk, public comment?
Yeah, if anybody would like to make public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well then that leads us to our always favorite number 10, adjournment. Without objection, we are adjourned.